Whatever you did with the lights, you did good.
They're good, aren't they?
Her theater background. I've been faithful and patient. It's like that light he was looking for.
Good evening, everyone. So if you will raise your right hand for me and repeat after me. You all right? I state your name, do solemnly swear.
I Pamela Bowers do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of Ohio.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of Ohio.
And that I will faithfully, honestly, and impartially.
And that I will faithfully, honestly, and impartially.
Discharge the duties of a board member of the Board of Education.
Discharge the duties of a board member of the Board of Education.
Of the Cincinnati City School District.
Of the Cincinnati City School District.
Of the City of Cincinnati, Ohio during my continuance in office.
Of the City of Cincinnati, Ohio during my continuance in office.
Congratulations.
On behalf of, on behalf of the, um, of the entire board, we welcome Ms. Bowers. And, um, we know that any of us is available to support you and assist you in any way possible. And I'm sure.
Didn't have the mic on, and I'm sure that folks will be reaching out to you. So welcome, welcome aboard.
Thank you. Okay, Ms. Bowers, would you like to have a few remarks?
Superintendent Mitchell, Treasurer Wagner to President Jones, Vice President Messer, and my fellow remaining board members, I would like to thank you for selecting me to work with you. As of Monday, the beginning stages of my indoctrination of what is expected of one in this position is becoming quite clear. Therefore, I have jumped in with two feet, with my sleeves rolled up, ready to work, ready to serve. I believe that with my God-given talents and gifts of compassion and advocacy, I make a great addition to this already gifted and diverse group, whom I have witnessed as a driven and committed, as I am in making decisions, that makes sense for our students and our families attending Cincinnati Public Schools. Thank you again for this appointment.
Thank you, Ms. Bowers. Okay, moving on with the agenda. I need a motion to approve the minutes from the special public meeting, March 19th, 2019, regular board meeting, March 20th, 2019, special meeting, March 20th, 2019, and special meeting, March 27th, 2019. Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained?
Abstained.
The minutes are approved as presented. Ms. Bolton, as Chair of the Finance Committee, please present the March 20th, 2019 Finance Committee Minutes.
Thank you, President Jones. Uh, yes, a kind of a quick summary for the Finance Committee, because it was also a special committee of the Audit Committee, and I would hope that Ms. Bates will be presenting that. But at least from the Finance Meeting, a couple of things. First of all, we need tonight to adopt the recommended committee work plan for finance that board members had before them in their Friday packet or Monday packet at this rate. We also had a schedule of financial work presented to us by the Treasurer in order for us to all keep this rapid pace, as well as deep thinking about so many of the financial issues that are before us. And then also, we did, by Mr. Messer and my suggestion, and Ms. Bates also, suggest that we develop an opposition resolution regarding House Bill 70, which deals with the takeover of school districts and what have you. And we've talked about it briefly before. We also had from the Treasurer and others, an update regarding CRAs or community reinvestment opportunities. And then heard from the Treasurer as well, her monthly update regarding the financial picture by month basis. We had a preschool promise update as well. And that was really important from a standpoint that they were sharing, preschool promise folks were sharing with us their audit results, which were positive and good. And then we had a report from our government relations folks, particularly Mr. Kearney, about what kinds of things we need to be watching for in Columbus and what kinds of actions we do need to take. He also suggested an opposition resolution regarding House Bill 70. And then we had from our IT folks, a suggestion of kind of restructuring our schedule of purchase and leasing for much of our technology, hardware, software, as well as a discussion regarding the ProSource proposed contract extension. Submit and hope for approval.
Thank you. Do board members have questions or comments? Okay, thanks. Ms. Bates, please present the March 20th, 2019 Audit Committee Meeting Report.
Yes, this was a continuation of the Finance Committee meeting. And this was a special meeting, because the Audit Committee felt very strongly about continued discussion on at least two, uh, issues. And a third was added, that was very timely as well. The first was the continued discussion of city abatements and considerations of those. And we received a presentation by legal counsel, which the board will be seeing later on in the presentations today. The recommendation from the committee was that the process of tracking abatements should be embedded into the agreement, because right now, it's the tracking of abatements is inconsistent between the district, the auditor's office, and the City of Cincinnati. And the responsibility, we all agree, lies with the City School District. So that should be part of the new agreement. There was also discussion regarding the walking school bus, because the OJP report came out, and there was an explanation of those recommendations and that were made. The third issue that we discussed were the levy renewal options. And the Audit Committee had some time to study those options. We received information from our Treasurer and also from Jens Sutmoller, who has been coordinating our levy campaigns. And the committee made a recommendation that instead of continuing with a substitute levy with a maximum of 10 years, that during this levy cycle, that we go for a continuing levy. So this committee is asking that the board take that into consideration in our deliberations regarding our levy discussions.
Thank you, Ms. Bates. Ms. Bolton, would you please present, I'm sorry, discussion, question?
Yeah, yeah. Thank you. I just wanted to add, you know, I think it was a very healthy discussion there. And obviously, the abatements specifically related to the renewal of the 99 Agreement are a topic of great concern to lots of taxpayers, who I think might join me that we're not paying too few taxes. I think many of us are happy to pay the taxes we are, but we want to pay our fair share. And I think the one component is the residential abatement program. The residential abatement program today is citywide. You can have a house, a brand-new house abated in neighborhoods where houses are being built for millions, all the way to our neighborhoods where, you know, they're being built in tens of thousands. And they're not being given based on economic opportunity or growth markers. So that being said, I think it's important to make sure that we, in the spirit of making sure people are barking up trees, that we bark up the right tree, that part, the residential abatement, falls squarely under the City Council's responsibility and does not require input from the school board. And I know I have had lots of people in the community say, "I hope you're not going to allow this unilateral abatement across the city for the millionaires to be abated going forward." And I just want to make sure we're positioning that, letting people know that that is not part of what we will be having the ability to sign off on. That'll be something that will be decided strictly by the City and City Council.
Madam President?
Yes, Ms. Bolton?
Regarding the audit recommendations regarding the renewal opportunities, when might the board have an opportunity to discuss that recommendation and actually decide upon that recommendation?
I think we can put it on as soon as possible. I mean, as early as the 17th.
Great, thank you.
We could do that. Okay. Any other questions or comments? Okay, Ms. Bolton, would you please present the student achievement minutes?
Gladly, thank you very much. We had a lot on the agenda that day. And a number of the items before us have been before us any number of times and over almost, some of them for a two-year period. But first, we'd like to make sure that board adopts tonight, and it would be voting for these minutes, you would be adopting the work plan for student achievement, just as if you vote for the finance minutes tonight, you're voting to adopt the work plan for finance. Administration brought to us the problem that in any number of different places, we have listed our same schools with many different names, depending upon to whom we're reporting. So administration wanted us to find a way to begin to help recommend some sort of continuity in the naming. And that appears in the minutes under IRN, and there are recommendations for approval. Also for approval, as a long disgust ever since we began talking about the creation of the CANS experience, the Clifton Area Neighborhood School, as it gets ready to open in its home this coming fall. We have had to make, and this has been, again, a long discussion, thinking in terms of that attendance boundary impacting attendance boundaries in other schools, close neighborhood schools in the north-central part of the district. And that too is, those boundaries are for discussion and approval tonight, are the ones we've been talking about any number of times. And that pertains to the CANS school, Winton Hills Academy, Pleasant Hill Academy, Mount Airy, possibly Chase particularly. So that is for approval. The other boundaries came from the Policy Committee last year. I believe it, Ms. Bates is urging and community urging regarding overcrowding, particularly at Pleasant Ridge and some under enrollment at Magnets. And that's also part of the actions this evening. But that action would be to send the suggested boundary lines out of student achievement back to policy to see if it meets what policy first discussed last year and had been working on. So two actions within the boundaries, one for the approval that was been discussed, and the other to send it back to policy to make sure that it meets their criteria. Then also, we had presentations from the community, the opportunity, as we go down the road, so to speak, where indeed, it's been made possible now that preschool-paid student interns can be somehow part of the Y program, YMCA program, and that that will allow some of our students, if they're in that career path, to actually be paid and serve in the early childhood development career path. Also, a very important, William Howard Taft Historical Site Competition Deputy Superintendent is involved with that. And that is to celebrate the 50th anniversary of that historical site, and it would pertain to current sophomores and juniors in our high schools, obviously. Professional staff evaluation, Mr. Davis brought up the idea, what's the support system? What's the improvement plan regarding those teachers and administrators that are interested in further development and may need further development? And that was discussed. And it's going to come back next month for discussion as well. Had good discussion regarding that. Senate Bill 216, this is the paper versus online option for third graders taking math and ELA. And I believe that action is that we have a resolution for tonight to approve. We had fantastic engagement by the professional staff, led by our curricular people and our testing people. And we go with their recommendation on that item. Also, we had discussion as well regarding Ohio Department of Ed 22-plus graduation. The law requires us to give our own diploma, if you will, for those people up to the age of 22. I believe that's the case. If they have been able to do what they need to do, even if it's not us administering it or providing the education, but they meet those criteria. And so that too is going to have to go back to policy to see if they can write the policy. It's law, it's required, but again, we need to send it back to policy. We also talked about the Stargill Stadium development, particularly some of the, I guess, visible signs, if you will. But most particularly, the importance of the murals that will be located in the Stargill Stadium, celebrating both the neighborhood and also world-class athletic efforts in both our integrated and segregated history as a school district. And we are proud to also present tonight, I know it'll be through the superintendent's recommendation, a new physical education and health and wellness curriculum. And we applaud the curriculum folks for putting that together and doing the engagement, which we said we needed to know more about their engagement, and they came back and reported. And I think the board will be pleased. We also had somewhat of a lengthy discussion regarding later starts and discuss some of the issues, particularly as it pertained to the most recent recommendation from the superintendent. And I know tonight we'll be discussing that as part of the agenda. We then also had, by the Community Learning Center Institute presentation, on how they are developing not just the network of support, but they are developing safety plans around their particular six schools regarding pedestrian safety and vehicular safety. And we think that what they're doing is a model for the rest of our schools. And I know that another item that's going to be brought up tonight is, that kind of follows through with that, is the need that all of our schools do that and that kind of engagement. And I know one of the interesting parts tonight is the Rothenberg discussion that I think the president is going to initiate. And then we said, "We're ready to adopt," or not ready to adopt, but ready to see the draft of the Student Conduct and Character Support System booklet. And we had already presented all of our suggestions. And next, in April, we will see what that new draft looks like and prepare for adoption. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Are there any questions or comments? Okay, I do have a need for a point of clarification. The action item in the Student Achievement Committee around the redrawing of the boundaries. I was concerned because, and either, you know, and I'll admit, if I have missed something in terms of how, what the process was in terms of redrawing those lines, I need clarity on what were the factors that the committee considered when redrawing those boundaries? And then another question is, are the schools that are within those boundaries, well, I have two questions. The schools that then become in those boundaries, are they overcrowded? Or are they, does the redrawing of the lines allow them access to CANS and/or other programs, other schools?
I'll start it, and I know my committee members are happy to follow up. From a historical standpoint, this began when we first started talking about CANS, as you will recall. And there was a philosophical issue to begin with regarding the formation of the initial boundary lines, and that since it was our newest neighborhood school, that indeed, maybe it was about time in the district to reevaluate and reassume that our attendance boundaries should be much more reflective of our neighborhood boundaries. And that started the whole CANS discussion. And that CANS pertains to at least three, actually a little bit more than three, neighborhood boundaries. And last year, it was determined that indeed, we would live by the boundaries that their community group and the city recognized, so that we had those neighborhood boundaries. As we did that, then it became apparent that for both Pleasant Hill and Winton Hills and Mount Airy, that the neighborhood boundaries in those neighborhoods, of Winton Hills, College Hill, and Mount Airy, the attendance boundaries did not reflect the neighborhood boundaries. So through the effort of the administration, I think at at least six different iterations of the boundary drawings last year and part of this year, they came up with that, as well as recognizing that if you start to change the Mount Airy boundary, you also begin to impact the Chase boundary. And so what we have come up with and what the Student Achievement Committee, after more than, well, two years, the boundary lines are the ones that we're recommending for that. And it is a philosophical shift, a part of the recommitment to neighborhood schools and necessitated because of the creation of CANS. And I will defer to my illustrious SAC members, Mr. Morosky and Mr. Davis. And Mr. Davis particularly thinks there should be a chart that would help you understand it, but go ahead.
Okay, Mr. Morosky?
Thank you, President Jones, and thank you, Ms. Bolton. And so I won't address any of the issues that Ms. Bolton addressed, but to your point about the overcrowding and/or space, there are two separate maps, as you'll see. And I'll tackle the, sort of, the Mount Airy, Pleasant Hill, Winton Hills, Chase map first. One of the other issues there too, that, again, philosophical but also pragmatic, is that you have, at Winton Hills, you have three housing projects that comprise the neighborhood. And we were literally splitting up families, brothers, sisters, busing kids four miles away to Pleasant Hill, and other kids just walked right out their back door. So now, you'll notice Winton Hills is all at their neighborhood school. So keeping families together, it's again philosophical and pragmatic, I think. In the other part of town, with Pleasant Ridge, Woodford, Silverton, John P. Parker, no secret that PRM is sort of popping at the seams. And this reorganization over here, while PRM is not wide open, it's like 99% maybe instead of 120% full. So it's drawn more on the neighborhood lines. And also, looking at where students were coming from was also one of the criteria. So at Woodford Padilla, for example, there weren't tremendous amounts of students coming from all over the city. And so relooking at that school, would it be better served as a neighborhood sort of program versus Magnet, ended up becoming the recommendation. And Sarah Treble Oliver has a really helpful graph that puts hard numbers on this, where you can see like option A, because we had three options per region, and it's got option A, B, and C. And the one we went with ultimately is A, drawn on true neighborhood lines, and then B, also addresses overcrowding and spatial issues.
Okay, thank you. I don't know if you had your hand up, I'm sorry.
I did have my hand up, but I don't have anything additional to add to what Member Morosky mentioned. But it would be nice if other board members could see where the comparisons also showed us capacity. We were very concerned about capacity and evening out capacity across the schools. And especially with, in regard to CANS, CANS is very conscious about not wanting to create a school that's just all white. So they actually asked for the boundaries to be additionally drawn so that they could recruit from neighborhoods that had African-American kids in them.
Right, and that's exactly why I asked the question. So, and so my question was clarified, and I appreciate that. Yes, Mr. Messer?
Yeah, thank you. And I think my only, maybe it's just more of a comment question. I think this is all very important. And at the same time, parallel path, we're working on the strategic plan. So my guess is, once we do some of the predictive modeling of where we think growth may be, et cetera, there may be an opportunity to meld this work with, you know, that new plan here, August, for its delivery as well.
Thank you. Any other, any additional comments or questions?
Now, I go to that. Really appreciate the administration's work on this. It's gone through two different superintendents and I don't know how many iterations of the Student Achievement Committee, at least four, I think. But appreciate that work. And do know, appreciate that this is a historic effort that we are beginning to address, not just the neighborhood piece, but the idea of finding ways to bring families together and also address our transportation issues as well.
Thank you. Okay, I need a motion to approve the minutes as presented. So moved. Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Any abstentions? Any abstentions? Okay. Motion carries, minutes are approved. Okay, does anyone have any kudos? No kudos from the kudo guy? Okay, yes, Mr. Messer?
Well, mine's not necessarily kudos, it's kind of two different things here. One, I wanted to make sure everyone was aware, Donna Jenkins, everyone knows Donna Jenkins. She had a quadruple bypass last week. And I talked to her yesterday, and she had just been released from the hospital. And maybe a little less vibrant than she is usually, but in very good spirits. And we sent over some of her favorite flat wings from our board members to wish her best. So I just wanted to make sure you all knew, in case you wanted to send her a card, and many people in the audience who probably work with her as well. She's a great member of the CPS team. And then also, just to acknowledge the passing of Ed Stern, who, you know, it's somebody that I wish I would have had a lot of time to get to know. But I think he was most notable for his adopt a school program and his effort to get lots of people together to bring interdisciplinary arts to 12 of our CPS schools, and just has made a huge impact on our community. So if you could keep Donna in your thoughts and wish her well. And then, you know, just as we all remember Ed Stern and his contributions to children and to Cincinnati Public Schools.
Thank you. Any additional, Mr. Davis?
I just have one quick kudo. I don't see Mr. Mouse, but I just wanted to give kudos to Mr. Mouse's daughter, Kennedy. And being that, you know, the love and the honor is here tonight, Kennedy will be going on to Miami University next fall. So kudos to Kennedy Miles, Winton Hills finest basketball player, female basketball player.
Thank you, thank you, well-deserved. Thank you. Ms. Bates, please present any retirements you may have.
Yes, we have several retirements from civil service personnel. Antoinette Little, Kathleen M. Sekalos, Susan Schroeder, Joanne Shamel, Antoinette M. Stevenson, and Ruby Tussi. And the board would like to congratulate them and thank them for their service to our children through the years. children through the years.
You can applaud. Thank you, Ms. Bates. We are now at the item on our agenda for hearing the public. Each speaker has three minutes to speak, and Mrs. Wagner will be our timekeeper. When the buzzer goes off, your three minutes are up. Please refrain from discussing any personnel items. When your name is called, please come to the podium to speak. We have two speakers tonight, and I'm going to call both of them, David Brenner and Michelle Dillingham.
Superintendent Mitchell, Treasurer Wagner, President Jones, and the rest of the board. I will keep things very brief this evening, I know that's unlike me. Since you're doing kudos, kudos on your leadership in the new health and physical education curriculum, I think it's wonderful that you are showing leadership in providing our students with the best information to provide them with the tools to make healthy choices and be more active that is sorely lacking in our communities today. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, thank you for the time. Welcome to Newport Member Bowers. My name is Michelle Dillingham. I'm here on behalf of the Cincinnati Educational Justice Coalition, and you'll probably see me a lot because I come down here. I want to just thank you for putting the 1999 tax exemption agreement on your agenda tonight. It is very important and literally transformative if we make some important changes. I want to thank Board Member Messer for the comment, although I'm a little confused about the role of the school board in relation to residential, because there's a code, the Muni Code 725.02, that does speak to the school board's role in all abatements. So I just wonder if we could continue to explore. And even if there's not a codified explicit lever there for school board to pull, I still think that you are a major stakeholder in residential property taxes, obviously, because that's the bulk of your funding for our kids. So anything you can do to make sure City Hall does the right thing by our students would be greatly appreciated. As we enter the point of getting back to the ballot box with property taxpayers, it's important that we do very due diligence with this upcoming renegotiated agreement. Lots of people are paying attention, as they should be, and I'll just quote one number. This is was from a public records request from the City of Cincinnati, that all abatements, if you combine commercial and multifamily, that approximately abated value of value is $700 million. And there's an estimate from this FOIA data from the city that if all Cincinnati property owners paid their full tax bill, the schools would get an extra $66 million a year. So these are big numbers we're talking about, transformative, really. We could hire a crossing guard for every school crosswalk, we could hire a librarian, a school nurse, and social worker for every school. So thank you for doing everything you can for the citizens and the children of our district to fight at the negotiating table in good faith around the issue of tax exemptions, whether they be commercial or residential. Finally, I'll invite you to a community call to action around this issue, April 17th, 6:00 PM at the Madisonville Rec Center. This is co-hosted by over 22 local civic and nonprofit organizations that are deeply engaged and concerned about the outcome of our new tax abatement policy that you will be renegotiating. Thank you for the time.
Thank you. Okay, Superintendent Mitchell, would you please introduce our first presentation?
Gladly. So I'm going to ask Susan Buntie, our Assistant Superintendent, one of our Assistant Superintendents, to come to the microphone. So we are very excited this evening to really get a look at the work that Miami University is doing with us. We are extremely thankful for all the support of our partners. We could not do this work alone. And so, again, we just are extremely happy that Miami University came to us, and I won't spoil the presentation by telling you what they're going to talk about, but it is truly very exciting and transformative for our district, so thank you.
Superintendent Mitchell, do you want me to sing the fight song first, or? Or is that after? I just I just want to, after, okay, I'm sorry.
You can hum.
So, good evening. And although we will share our complete vision for talent development for our school district later in this school year, we want to be able to really take some time this afternoon and focus in on how the district is really thinking about developing a strong pipeline, both of teachers and of leaders. We obviously can't do this work in isolation, so in collaboration with our wonderful partners from Miami University, in addition to our Human Resources and Curriculum Department, as well as in close partnership with the Cincinnati Federation of Teachers, we've developed several programs to address both teacher pipeline and leader pipeline, which you will now hear in more detail. Kayla Ritter-Rickles will begin.
Hi, everybody. So in September of 2017, Miami and Cincinnati Public School leadership sat down to make a commitment to one another to create a better partnership together, to think both about our students and our staff and how we can support the work that is going on and how we can lean into what one another can do best. And so there are a couple partnerships that we have to offer or that we're working on that focus both on students and on teachers. And so I have the pleasure of sharing the student-focused partnerships along with my partners from Miami today. The first that got a ton of visibility last year and will continue this year and years to come is our Miami Cincinnati Scholars Program. So focusing on our identity-based leadership programs in the Cincinnati Public Schools with more in girls to women and providing scholarship opportunities in the in the dime of full cost of attendance scholarships to Miami, so that they can have robust college experiences and opportunities. The two pictures on our slide today are actually of our men from last year, we had a cohort of five. This academic year, Miami expanded the opportunity to include women and will have up to 20 spots available for full cost of attendance scholarships. So it's a huge deal, and Miami is making big commitments to our students and our seniors right now, but we also have partners and school-based programs that are focused on the pipeline of students to come into Miami. And so at this point, I'm going to turn it over to Dr. Brian Schultz and Dr. Tammy Schwartz to talk about our school-based programs that are coming from the College of Education.
Thanks so much, Kayla, and thank you for welcoming us to the board meeting today. My name's Brian Schultz, I'm a professor, and I chair the Department of Teacher Education at Miami University. And the program that I'm going to talk about is what we're calling Miami University Teach Cincinnati, and TEACH stands for Transformative Educators Advocating Change. The idea of this program is to create a grow-your-own pipeline of high school students that want to be teachers, so particularly focusing on students of color who would like to be teachers starting in eighth grade. And so we're creating the space and the opportunity at Aiken High School, and so a shout out to Principal Vota as well. So Aiken is here multiple times over tonight. The idea is to create a space and an opportunity for high school students who are interested in becoming teachers to join a cohort and participate in activities and college coursework during their high school years, and then matriculate on to Miami University's Department of Teacher Education, go through that program, and then return to Cincinnati Public Schools as insider, justice-oriented teachers. And so what Miami is doing right now in partnership with the folks at Aiken is to have a professor in residence that's at Aiken on a weekly basis, working with youth in eighth and ninth grade. We have a doctoral student who spends three days a week, primarily right now with the eighth graders. We've worked together with with Kayla and her team to bring the students to Miami for visits both in the fall and in the spring. And right now, we have 19 students in ninth grade who are part of this cohort and 15 in eighth grade. And so this is just the beginning. The program is is in year zero, if you will, so we've identified the cohort, we've done a lot of planning, and then the idea is to launch into deeper programming starting in the fall. And so so we're really excited about this work. It really speaks to the mission of both the College of Education, Health, and Society, and to our teacher education mission that talks about creating teachers who are culturally and contextually responsive and who are challenging racial injustices that we see in schools, that are pervasive in schools across the country, but particularly in large urban areas such as Cincinnati. So thank you very much. I'm going to introduce my colleague, Dr. Tammy Schwartz, who directs our Urban Cohort Program, and she's going to talk about another partnership project that we're working on.
Thank you, thank you, Brian, and good evening, everyone. As a former student in your district and a graduate from your district, and actually a former teacher in the old Washington Park Elementary School, it is with the great pride and honor that I'm now at Miami University, and because of the lessons learned within this district, have had the opportunity to become the founder and director for Miami's nationally award-winning Urban Teaching Cohort, which is a place-based and community-based approach to teacher preparation. We are now interdisciplinary, actually, preparing all kinds of professionals to get grounded in the life of the community, to see the community from an asset perspective, and to work alongside that community. We ain't coming to save and we ain't coming to help, we're coming to walk alongside to move the needle forward on justice. And in particular, tonight, one aspect of our program that I want to highlight is something that we have been doing for the past six years with our partner schools in Cincinnati, and that is we've been engaging youth as young as fifth grade and as old as 11th grade in something called Youth Participatory Action Research as a component of our program. Our students in our program go out to one of our partner schools in Cincinnati alongside a faculty member and work with youth who themselves decide on issues that are important to them, and then those youth work to engage in action around those issues. What we are trying to model for our prospective teachers at Miami is that you can build curriculum that is grounded in the life of children and what matters to them. We've seen remarkable things happen when we've engaged youth around issues that are important to them, and some of the people sitting at your table have been engaged with that, and the kind of academic material that they can engage with that's well above their grade level when they're focused on those issues. So we're really excited to help model for our teachers, prospective teachers, what it means to build curriculum in a different way, and to also watch your youth succeed and achieve and see themselves as individuals with civic capacity. Thanks.
Good evening, everyone. I'm Jamie Burney, CFT Project Liaison. Before I begin talking about the leadership pipeline, I first want to acknowledge and thank not only Miami University, but Dr. Kathy McCauley, who has worked hard to make this program possible. In 10 years, the CPS Miami Leadership Program will have produced 200 teachers with a minimum of 12 graduate hours in educational leadership, most of whom will go on to get their master's degree in educational leadership and have their administrator's license. With Miami's help, we'll be well supplied with both teacher and administrator leadership. The roots of this began in the 2017-18 school year. The spring of that year, the decision was made to offer a four-course leadership sequence to CPS teachers by Miami. And that those courses will be taught at Marison Academy. Miami very generously supported the offer by making the tuition almost 25% of the normal cost. We were unsure that the the interest that would be generated. We wanted to limit the classes to 20 teachers, but we wanted to be sure we got at least 20. We put out a district-wide email, 59 teachers applied for the 20 spots, we went through a selection process, and we had our first cohort of educational leaders. That first cohort finished the first semester in December very successfully. They are in their second semester and will give their final presentations in May. We are currently recruit, we've actually already recruited a second cohort for next year. Those selections are going to be made by the end of this week. 76 people applied this time for those 20 spots, so the interest is growing, the demand is out there. Based on the success with these early cohorts, CPS and Miami have both made a commitment to this for the future. We will continue to recruit teacher cohorts. Miami will continue to offer financial support, teachers will continue to grow in their leadership skills, and will continue to produce leaders for CPS for the future. All this begins, however, with the work of the four foundation courses that are offered, and I want to introduce Dr. Meredith Ranowski to tell you about that work.
Hi, I'm Meredith Ranowski, I'm a faculty member in education leadership at Miami University, and it has been my true honor to get to work with this first cohort of teacher leaders from Cincinnati Public Schools for the past two semesters, because they are incredibly passionate, driven, committed professionals. So it's really a joy to get to work with them every week. So I just wanted to give some updates on the work that we are have been engaged in last semester and are engaging in currently. Teacher leadership is important. We have a significant body of research that demonstrates that schools and districts that employ systematic teacher leadership have higher student outcomes and overall school organizational outcomes. And so our goal for teacher leadership is that we're developing teacher leaders who are instructional and curriculum specialists, that they are learning facilitators and mentors throughout their school buildings and the district broadly, and that they have the capacity to address a tremendous range of organizational issues and challenges. The first class that they that I had these students for was in Applied Leadership Theory. So we engaged deeply in the study of major leadership theories, including instructional leadership, transformational leadership, shared and collaborative leadership. And then teachers were asked to apply those very rigorous theories to real problems of practice in their own schools, and they achieved more than I ever imagined that they would. Their presentations were very impressive. Both Jamie and Susan attended those presentations, and they worked on a tremendous number of particular problems, including implementation of restorative justice and PBIS at different high schools, the use of culturally relevant pedagogy, supporting the Vision 2020 Plan at six different neighborhood schools, the effective use of instructional technology, improving academic achievement, particularly for English language learners in the district, and K3 literacy, and then also the effective use of special education services throughout the district. So these were real problems of practice situated in your schools that these teacher leaders thought deeply about and created really effective, actionable improvement plans. So this semester, I have them in data-informed decision-making, which is the class that almost every ed leadership student dreads, because it's very statistically driven, it's driven by data visualization. But these teachers are tackling it head-on, and they're doing an amazing job. They've already created an initial school improvement plan, they recreated and built upon existing one plans using data that they brought in from their schools as well as the state, and they are then tackling the very daunting task of using statistics to disaggregate data by underserved subgroups. And so we'll be presenting that information on May 9th, and so board members are welcome to attend. We hope that you would. One of the students is here, Glenn. He is very passionate and committed to working around ELL student populations at Reese Price Elementary, and that's been the focus of his school improvement work. So that is where we're at now. I'm just going to put up some of sort of the quotes, and people can read them, these are what the different teachers are saying about their experience. They're learning to be leaders, they're learning to be data-informed, they're deeply engaged in the process of school improvement science, particularly identifying opportunity gaps that exist in their schools, and really addressing those opportunity gaps using rigorous research-based approaches. And we probably, I don't, Glenn, they may have taken out your picture with your fancy pants. We also have a lot of fun, probably more fun than we should in a graduate program, but...
Thank you. Do board members have questions or comments? Mr. Messer, followed by Mr. Morosky?
I just want to say thank you to our partners at...
I just want to say thank you to our partners at Miami, and I am one that has gotten to see firsthand the impact of the Urban Teaching Cohort during my time as over-the-rye Community Council President and being asked to be kind of a guest, community leader, who talked with them about the issues that they identified, and I saw their presentations. We even did some community awareness building around the issues that our children thought were important, and that probably was my favorite part, because as a community council member, if you can figure out a way to tap into the youth, you can really expedite the growth and movement of a community. So, thank you for your work there, and I think, I know the superintendent is deeply committed to this work. I think there are few things that we can do more important than workplace and workforce as we ensure that the environment is created for our children to succeed. So, thank you for all of your work in this area. It is greatly appreciated.
Thank you. Mr. Morosky?
Thank you, President Jones. I just want to second Board Member Messer and thank all of you for helping to create and sustain this partnership. I was actually up in McGuffey Hall on Monday delivering my Equity and Educational Leadership Talk to Ms. McMillan's class. I think it's of note that the doctoral student, who is at Aiken three days a week, is a CPS teacher who is taking a leave to go through this program, and I just kind of wanted to call that out. Y'all's program is really, really impressive, and like Mr. Messer, I was actually Roethenberg this morning, where some of the Urban Cohort kids are, and Lower Price Hill before that. So, I want to thank you very sincerely for this, and another thing I want to highlight is the importance of working with students to sort of have homegrown educators, as it were, to return back to Cincinnati Public that understand not only the schools, but the communities, because if you, and you referenced a couple, y'all said context a couple times. I was an English teacher for 10 years, and context is the most important thing there is, and if you don't know the context in which you're walking or into which you're teaching, it's not as impactful. To that end, the fact that you also have this leadership cohort that 70-some people want to be a part of, that you're taking the time to work with the teachers and the students at the same time, that combination is just really special, and I've said a number of times, and Ms. Bolton and Mr. Davis know this from Student Achievement, and some of the CFT folks out there, I'm really interested in a pipeline for early educators in the district as well. And we heard exciting things through our report of the minutes about paid internships that could exist potentially in the future, and so, all of this combined with all the career tech we do to actually be, have a partner like Miami, who's investing in our kids in this way, is just very meaningful, and so, however, I can continue to be supportive of that partnership. I know Ms. Bunty and Ms. Rickles will let us know in Student Achievement, so just thank you so much. It really is making a big difference.
Thank you. Mr. Davis?
I just want to echo the thanks and the gratitude for what you guys are doing, especially for me, the teacher pipeline piece is critical, and, you know, I'll be following up to find out who those 15 eighth graders and 19th, 19th graders are to encourage them to continue, because there's no greater, there's no greater teacher for empathy than being the empathetic person. And I, I really just had a question, that just came from the heart, but my question was where, and I'm sure Susan and Caleb will tell us, but where's the May 9th presentation?
Yeah, it's at Marison in Room 1A. So, right when you come in, that main entrance in the big room.
You'll send me something?
Yes.
Thank you.
Any other questions or comments? Thank you all so much. It's, it's an exciting program and certainly a great opportunity for the district, and we look forward to hearing more. Thank you. Superintendent?
Yes, so if I could just give one more big thank you to Miami University, they really stepped up to the plate. They came to us last year and said, "What can we do for you all?" We used their example of granting up to 20 full ride scholarships to Miami for next year to start a bidding war with other universities to say, "How many are you going to give us?" And so, really, just could not thank them enough for their time. They didn't come to us and say, "How much can you pay? How much can you contribute?" They came to us and said, "What do you need, and we'll supply your need." We couldn't be happier over the, the student leadership work that we're doing to grow our own teachers, so thank you so much for that, as well as the Urban Educator Program. In addition to the teachers who are going through the teacher leadership, cannot rave enough about you, Professor. They love you, and they come to class, and they're learning so much, and so, again, it's just a really great testament to the partnership and to Miami University. So, again, thank you so much. All right, so our next presentation. Many people who work for CPS and who volunteer and who partner for CPS work day in and day out, and the work along with the board members can be grueling, it can be hard, and you sometimes wonder, "Am I really making a difference?" And it's presentations like the next presentation that will truly let you know how much of a difference you're really making and how important the work you're doing is. And so, I'd like to present Principal Lisa Vota to come down with her amazing students to talk about some of the work that's taking place at Aiken.
Good evening.
Good evening.
I just wanted to take a minute to introduce my, one of my teacher leaders, Clarice Williams. I think it's important that we give credit where credit's due. Clarice is the driving force behind this whole year-long project that I think you will be impressed with, what they're asking and the benevolence. We always believe in giving back, and I think that this evening, you're going to see the spirit behind the work that we do. Clarice has been with the district for 17 years. She teaches, she's been teaching at Aiken since 2019, or 2009. She's my, my English Department Chair. She's the lead teacher in the district. She currently teaches English 12. She is a New Tech Certified Teacher Trainer, and she's a Master of PBL, and she's going to demonstrate her craft and show off our kids tonight. Thank you so much for having us.
Good evening. We are here presenting a, our project idea and to let you know what we're hoping will be support in promoting and publishing and moving forward with our endeavor, as you can see, Swoop Publishing. As you know, if writing were easy to do, then everybody would have a bestseller. So, this has been a project that actually hasn't gone all year long. That was a mistake on my part, which we'll fix, but it has been happening since the beginning of the third quarter, and we're continuing this quarter. Swoop Publishing is the company it's going to be, that we're going to trademark, and the idea behind it is to publish our written works at Aiken High School and in hopes that it'll continue at other Cincinnati Public Schools. As you know, the, the, it's easy to, I mean, you know, once a book is written, the difficult part is finding someone who will publish it. Well, we have the means right now in our own school to both write and publish our books, as you will see. So, I will let my students take over. These are my, our student presenters for my English 12 class, and behind you is only half of my senior class. It's about 85 of us.
Hi, my name is Chantel Harris, and we are here presenting to you to explain our project and book. We hope that you can get your support, that we can get your support, and help promote and publish our book on Cincinnati Public Schools website and your newsletter. We hope that you purchase our books to help us reach our goal of raising $7,000 to donate the 85% of the profits to four social service organizations that support our marginalized groups, and those organizations are Free Store Food Bank, that they support Aiken's Food Pantry, Women's Crisis Center, they support one of our teams and have offered additional support when we needed, Community Action Agency. Their organization supports at least two of our marginalized groups, People in Poverty and Ex Felons, Greater Cincinnati Homeless Coalition. They help support Aiken and help provide research for our book, and 15 of our properties will be invested into Swoop Publishing for future projects.
Hi, my name's Kiella Covington, and this is our driving question. How can we attain justice for marginalized groups? Authenticity, we are authors, publishers, promoters, and social advocates. Student choice, we chose which marginalized group we wanted to research and support. The marginalized groups are women, LGBTQ, community, people in poverty, ex-felons, and immigrants. The other student choice, the genre of writing, Dear Reader Letters profiles, stories, poems, music, art, and political cartoons.
How you guys doing? I'm Timothy Jordan, a senior at Aiken High School. I'll be explaining the Swoop Publishing. The Swoop Publishing is Aiken's publishing company started in 2019. We'd be publishing and distributing our book and other future projects from Aiken students. We also hope to publish books from other Cincinnati Public Schools. If you look behind you, that is the front and back cover of our page, of our book. Our target due date is April 19th. Hopefully, our book will be published by then.
My name's Tremaine Smith, and our book's objective is to offer, to offer support and encouragement to marginalized groups, to enlighten audiences of their experiences, to bring awareness of how society treats them, and to sell the book and donate the majority of the proceeds, the proceeds to our four social organizations that support the marginalized groups.
So, we're going to have three of our students present some, just a few pieces from the draft of our book. We're going to start with Mr. Turner. Mr. Turner shows artwork.
Hello, I'm Damar Turner from Aiken High School. I'm a senior, and my artwork basically represented change. The reason that the hands are around the throat is to prevent him from changing and basically lighting the colors that is dripping out his eyes and his mouth show.
I'm sorry, page 49.
Thank you. Thank you. And the reason I chose to represent it like this is to show clearly that it's like he wants to let something out, but he's trying to hide it from society, because he's scared of how people will judge him and how people will perceive him. The main reason I chose the colors is to support the community I am in myself and the community I support within the book, the LGBTQ+. Thank you.
Please turn to page 17. This poem is by Denae Sanders, and it's called Rules. Sometimes I wonder, should I have gone in a different direction? You feel it's your fault and constantly stare at your reflection. I can't look at this world the same. I can't turn my back because my life has changed. Everything I thought I knew was automatically rearranged. I continuously think back on what happened that horrible day. The day it happened, I feel everything was just taken away. I thought to myself, should I tell the truth or unfold? But for some reason, I couldn't, so I never told. I remember I was pushed into the wooden door. I began to wake up cold, bloody, and shivering on the floor. I was dizzy. It felt like I had taken some type of potion, walking back and forth constantly in one motion. Everything I tried to remember just seemed so cruel, but in my head, it's my fault because I didn't follow the rules. Can you guys please turn to page 79? This is my dear reader letter. I wrote it. I am not lazy, and my appearance is a distraction from who I really am. I'm not homeless by choice. I'm not living like this and holding up signs just to collect money and use it for unnecessary reasons. I have a few reasons why I'm homeless, and I'm trying to find help. I had my own apartment, a job, and I was working on getting a second job. I owned a car. It was paid off. My rent was paid off months ahead. A few years passed, then one day I went to work, and I lost my job because the business shut down. I began applying for high-paying jobs. No one responded. I never gave up until a couple months went by and I got an eviction notice. I was so busy trying to find another job because I couldn't pay my rent. I got evicted, and I had no one to help me. I didn't have any family or friends who were willing to let me stay with them. I lost faith. Living on the streets is different, and I had to adjust to my new way of life. I slept on the sidewalk and in a box. I walked around in dirty, smelly, and baggy clothes. Every time someone saw me walking, they looked disgusted. I would speak and ask for change, but they would ignore me, laugh, and walk away. Despite my decision, I tried my best to look decent so that I could find another job. The first, the problem is, how can I find another job when I don't have money for transportation to work, and people judge me by my appearance? I feel obligated to tell my story to the world. Unfortunately, I was judged by how I looked and smelled, and I could not do anything about it until now. I want you to read this letter and help me get my story out. I'm an outcast. I am still looking for jobs, and I want the world to see that not every homeless person is an alcoholic or a drug addict. Please remember that most of us aren't homeless by choice. Again, please keep your judgments to yourself. I get asked this question all the time. Am I willing to work for what I want? The answer is, yes, I am. I am willing to do whatever it takes to get off the streets and live a normal life again.
Okay, so these are just examples and excerpts from the draft that you have in front of you. We are still perfecting our work, and we're hoping to be ready for publication, and by ready for publication, we do have the means. So, when we're done, it will be a book, as you see here, or will be this.
Hi, I'm Legeria Robinson. Right now, we're revising our literature to get it ready for publication. We will promote the book using businesses, businesses, social media, and the media. We have emailed and met with Tamaya Dennett regarding council providing support for our book. She asked us to email her when we finished the book, and she would help. We also have reached out to Greg Glennsman, who also offered help, and we will print at least 100 copies for the first one.
My name is DeRondrez McLeod, and can y'all please use all social formats to help us spread our news and promote our book? We matter too.
Thank you all.
Yes, board members, do you have any questions or comments? Mr. Messer?
Yeah, first of all, thank you to each of you, and I can imagine being your age and coming to speak in, in front of a board like this in an auditorium, so kudos to you for stepping forward on behalf of lots of people that you represent in this book. Just flipping through it, I was even getting a little choked up before you even started talking, so thank you for your advocacy. I think it's a brilliant idea, and I would absolutely love to be helpful in any way that I can. Thank you so much.
Mr. Morosky, followed by Ms. Bolton?
I'd, we'll start by seconding Board Member Messer that however we can be helpful, I think we should figure out what that looks like and how we can do it. I would like to just open it up. Any student can respond to this. I, like Mr. Messer, was getting choked up and did get choked up. This is extremely powerful for a lot of reasons. So, kudos to you all. I found my kudos, and to Principal Lutao and to teacher and all the teachers at Aiken that have been part of this. And, uh, to Principal, uh, Latao and, um, to teacher and all the teachers at Aiken that have been part of this. But for the students, I'm just curious, and you don't all have to respond, only one of you can, if none of you want to, you don't have to. But for you, um, being the creators of this, what was? What was your experience like creating this and seeing this, uh, come to fruition? Um, you all spoke with great passion, this obviously means a lot to you. And I'm curious if you may be willing to share, like, if there's any part of this whole process that was more profound than others, there is somebody coming already. So what was this like for you? What what do you feel you got out of it?
Um, well, like in our school, like she split us up into sections, like different, like topics, like poverty, homelessness, LGBTQ. I had poverty, like, so I think, like, I grew up in poverty, so I think I could connect with, like, my background and my past history, like, so. It's like me basically, like, getting my story out there, like, for people, like, to understand it's real, like, it's real life struggles out there to go overcome, like.
Uh, I'm in a group with women and I don't know too much about women. So, um, me knowing that, like, men get paid more and all that. I just, it's just information that I don't know about women that I think I should know about.
I wish more adults thought like you guys. Thank you for sharing.
Ms. Ms. Bolton?
Well, I am choked up. I mean, besides this being a an exciting thing for you all to be doing and for us to read. I am very proud to say I'm a proud graduate of Aiken High School. And it has Swoop and it has a great spirit and I really appreciate what you do. I have a couple of technical questions, one for teacher particularly. How does the New Tech Way influence what you've been able to achieve here? Is it within that theme or that that course of instruction? Or is it, has this happened basically outside that, uh, course of of instruction?
The driving force, um, uh, for those of you who are, I suppose, with project-based learning. Um, we're a part of the New Tech Network, of which, um, the idea should be, I mean, project-based learning that, uh, we begin with the end in mind. So we determine what we want to focus on, what concepts, what skills, and then decide what product will be the solution and culmination of that activity. And ideally, the, um, the project should be authentic and the kids should be solving some real world problem. And ideally, that the community could use. So that was how it was based. Uh, you know, the district has, uh, many questions and, uh, curriculum guides, um, given by grade level and by quarter. And so mine, English twelve, um, third quarter is how do, uh, art, music and media define justice? So it's from that, so the driving question, and that's what, um, New Tech, New Tech language. Uh, I use that and we define first justice, this idea of justice and equity and then define marginalization. And then that's how we, uh, driving question. How do we define, I mean, how do we attain justice and again, justice as an equity? Um, for marginalized communities. So it is very much a part of and a spirit of, um, project-based learning of the New Tech Network.
That's very gratifying to hear, I really appreciate that. And we'll think back as to when we were reinventing Aiken and I know, uh, President Sellers was very much a part of that as well, who also is a graduate of Aiken. Uh, that's exciting. I want to also say, and the superintendent always hears me say this, but we need these sorts of writing skills. And writing labs and writing intensity in all of our high schools. We have writing labs in some of our high schools, not all of our high schools. And this is such a very meaningful way for you all to express and find yourself and help us better understand one another. And and it's my hope that not only do we have the DBQ thing, uh, you know, reissued, uh, throughout the district, which is so essential in the AP program. But that we do more of the writing labs and we do more of this kind of leadership that's being shown by by not only the teachers and the administration people, but also by the students. You make us very, very proud, thank you.
Ms. Bates followed by Mr. Davis?
Yes, really, I want to, uh, give kudos to the teachers and administrators who created this forum to enable these students to speak so candidly and openly through their art. I mean, that's just not the side of education we always see and hear about. And and really, life really is all about relationships. And it's really clear that you all trust one another and you have these relationships and enable the the students to to speak what they feel. And put it in art form and and so beautifully. Uh, you know, Aiken is such a a great place. I I really congratulate all of you for for entering into this venture, it's so cool.
Mr. Davis?
Ms. Williams, count me in, whatever you need. I I I would love to be a a partner in this. Each of you have made us so proud tonight. Uh, noodles, I ate, I am super, super proud. I've already texted a picture of you presenting to your high school coach and your college coach. And I want you to know, man, I've always believed in you. Always. You're gonna be special noodles.
And and then, um, a final comment here, uh, again, a ditto of what my fellow board members have already said. But I think it takes a great deal of honesty and integrity to really show your emotions through your it through your expression of what you have here. And and it demonstrates the character that that you offer. And and so you are leaders. You are leaders, you know, and and I'm very, very impressed with the work in here. I'm gonna read it cover to cover. And I personally commit to, um, uh, supporting you in any way that I can. And one of the things that you all have done, which I relate back to the Miami presentation, is you're talking about things that are relevant to you. You live in a trying time. And for you to come up and just be honest and and write things like this and artwork and express yourselves. And and I'm sure, I am one hundred percent certain that you're learning the basics of whatever we we try to do in our educational system. It shows through your work. So you you should be proud. And and your classmates who came with you, I think deserve applause. They're not presenting, but. But just the fact that they're here to support you is evidence of of how much they care. So thank you again for your presentation. Thank you. Superintendent?
Yes, so our final presentation will be provided by our General Counsel, Dan Hoying, and our Treasurer, Jennifer Wagner. And this is to provide factual information as it relates to the nineteen ninety-nine agreement, which has been the subject of many conversations over the last several months. And so I'll turn it over to Dan Hoying.
Good afternoon. Thank you for allowing us to present on the nineteen ninety-nine agreement, an important negotiation that we'll have this year with the city of Cincinnati about the continuation of that agreement. The team that internally has been working on preparing for negotiations includes, of course, the Treasurer and myself, but also Brittany Triolo, who's a, um, uh, one of Jen's directors for financial reporting and transparency. Uh, and Nathan Tyerher from the Accounts Receivable Department, who has a lot to do with, um, invoicing and maintaining these, um, these CRA agreements. Um, I I want to point out also that we've, uh, had help from our outside counsel, Dave DiMuzio, who's here tonight. He's, uh, you can, Dave's back there. Dave has long, for a long time been the board's counsel for Board of Revision Matters, um, and has helped us with that. We've also had help from, uh, Consultant Ken Dietz, um, who's again, a longtime consultant for the district in this area. I want to point out that any mistakes in delivering the info in this presentation are my own and not a reflection of the very capable team that's working on this. But there there are, I mean, there's a lot of components. And so to the extent I don't have all the answers for you today, I'm glad to, um, get back to you with further information. Yeah, so to start, um, this is a repeat of the presentation that I gave, uh, that Jen and I gave in Finance and Audit, uh, two weeks ago. Uh, I'll move fairly quickly through the materials, but if you have questions, I won't be offended if if I'm interrupted and and glad to provide whatever information we can. This presentation is, has a lot of information organized into three areas. I'll provide some legal background about abatements in the state of Ohio, um, some information and background on the ninety-nine agreement, uh, some information and background on the financial, uh, fi- district's finances and how we're doing under this agreement. And and then finally, some recommendations, at least from the administration and our team, as to what we should be thinking about, uh, in terms of renegotiating this agreement with with the city. In general, an abatement should be a tool that is used to incentivize development that would not otherwise occur without that abatement. And that's, that's really critical and important, um, because if if abatements are offered to development that would otherwise occur, or that would happen even without the abatement, then it really starts to look like public finances, public, uh, dollars are being, uh, perhaps wasted. Or or that there's unfairness. And and so that's where the controversy is. Not not that, uh, uh, everyone, I think, would agree that abatements, um, spur development. And and that's, that's true, just like lower costs of, um, materials, building materials, steel and lumber, or labor costs go down, then that spurs development. That that's not controversial. What's controversial is whether these abatements, whether lowering the cost of of development, um, is necessary and whether that development would otherwise occur. Because if it would, there's really no reason to offer the abatement. Um, there are numerous statutes in the Ohio Revised Code that allow municipalities, counties, um, localities to offer incentives, tax abatement, real estate tax abatement incentives to developers. Um, and these consist of TIFs, uh, community reinvestment areas, CRAs, uh, urban renewal projects, nuisance abatement, community redevelopment corporations, that there are numerous. As as you can see in the far right-hand column, some of these, uh, programs and and incentives and abatements, we do have the ability, the the school board's permission is required. The municipality has to give us notice, we have to give approval. Um, and others are not. Um, so earlier it was mentioned by Board Member Messer that CRA residential agreements are not subject to the board's approval. That's, that's absolutely correct. And it's actually recognized in the ninety-nine agreement as well, that that not all types of abatements are are, they're not asking for our permission because they don't need that our permission on so some types of abatements. So just to read right from the ninety-nine agreement. The board and the city acknowledge and agree that the following are not applicable projects under this agreement, inasmuch as approval from the board is not required for tax exemptions of up to a hundred percent of these projects. And then they list off environmental remediation projects, improvement of environmental remediated properties, uh, CRAs that are not industrial or commercial CRAs, and and so on and so forth. So we're talking about a very specific type of agreement incentive that the city can offer and that requires the board's approval. That is not to say that the the city's offering of those other types of incentives, including residential CRAs, don't have an impact on our revenues. They certainly do, and I'll have a slide where we show, you know, what we think are are the impact just of those residential CRAs in the last several years. The last category I put up here is a little bit different, it's tax exemptions. Uh, that's a different category of, uh, you know, because that's not intended as an incentive, but there are certain properties that are exempt from property taxation, including, for example, schools and school administrative buildings and roads. And and other types of property that are just not subject to taxation. I I I include it here because I I I think it's important often, uh, as often as we can, to highlight that that's also an area where the school district loses revenue when when there's exemptions. And so while certainly, you you know, I'm not arguing that churches and nonprofits and and schools and governments shouldn't have exemptions, but that's an area where we also have to be cautious to make sure that exemptions aren't being offered that that shouldn't be. I want to dig a little bit deeper into CRAs and TIFs, which are probably the most frequent types of abatements that we see. And again, highlight that 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 CRAs and TIFs can be offered with or without the board's approval. And and so again, we're we're limiting, again, what we're talking about here, where when the city is asking for us, for our approval, the Board of Education's approval, there's only a limited type of agreements that they're referring to. Uh, for example, CRAs, even the industrial and commercial CRAs can be offered without any approval from the Board of Education of up to fifty percent of of taxes. And I believe CRAs are for fifteen years. Uh, same with TIFs and tax increment financing, there's a certain level of abatement that can be offered to a developer without the board's approval. So one of the things we're asked a lot of times is what happens if there's no agreement between the city and the school district? What what would happen is the city would still have some ability to offer these kinds of incentives or abatements, um, even without the board's approval. Uh, it's also true that they could offer those higher levels on a one-off basis as they request, kind of on an individual agreement by agreement basis for the board's approval, that that could occur. You know, but that that's what would occur if there was no agreement, that there are still some abatements that the city can offer even without the board's approval. Um, again, for those agreements that require the board's approval, there's generally a notice provision, where where they're required to notify you. That there's generally, uh, an opportunity for the board to enter into an agreement of what what we would call a pilot or a payment in lieu of taxes agreement, where some or all of the board's, uh, lost tax revenues are are paid, either by the developer directly or by the city. Um, and then if the abatement re- results, um, i- i- without your approval in some of these agreements, especially under, let's see, fifty-seven oh nine point eight-two, that there can be a clawback up for the board, a sharing of the income revenue, the income tax revenues that are generated. Let me explain that just for a second, that can be confusing. This, there's a danger of the city offering an abatement, a real estate tax abatement to, let's say, a new business that comes in, because the city only receives a very small portion of the real estate taxes. There are other forms of revenue that that new development could create for the city, such as income taxes, that the school board doesn't necessarily see any of. And so in the in the case where there's not an agreement, um, the law provides in some cases that the school district gets to share in income tax revenues with the city. All of that is waived by the school district's ninety-nine agreement. We've waived our notice requirement, we've waived our ability to approve these agreements. And we've, on on the condition, on certain conditions that we'll get to next, that that, um, the the city has carte blanche to offer these abatements up to the full amount extent, uh, a- a- allowed by law. And without any income tax sharing, again, without any notice to the board and without any approval. So that gets me to the background of the ninety-nine agreement, kind of how we got here. Um, the ninety-nine agreement arose out of the, of actually a ninety-six MOU with this, the the city and the county. Um, it started with the property tax, um, excuse me, not the property tax, the sales tax that was used to support the stadium, um, uh, rebuild. The county in that agreement agreed to contribute an amount equal to the property taxes that we were foregoing on the stadium property. So that when the stadiums were built, they had a certain value, this, uh, county expected that they would be exempt from taxation. And we said we'd agree to that on the condition that we were paid an amount equal to what our share of those revenues would be. It turned out, we expected at the time it would be about five million dollars, it turned out to be closer to, I think, ten million dollars. That agreement was later renegotiated where the county has essentially taken over our debt service payments, um, on on some cops, um, uh, debt, the public finance agreements that we made. So so that that agreement with the county, um, continues, it continues, I think, for another ten years or so, uh, where the county is making annual payments to us. And at the end of that agreement, has to pay off, I believe, most of the principal of those, um, public finance arrangements.
Right, that agreement was related to part of the facility master plan that wasn't funded by the state. So we took, uh, did certificates of participation to add some of those, um, properties back in. I can't for the life of me recall exactly which those schools were. Um, but, so they're not making our debt payments for us, they pay us, it goes into our debt service fund and we use those funds against debt.
Good clarification there. This is a separate side agreement, uh, where the city and the county agreed that, uh, part of that sales tax would be used to generate an additional five million dollars of capital improvement needs, uh, of the board, for the Board of Education. And so that's, that's the five million dollars we're talking about here. Uh, the ninety-nine agreement that resulted had the city and the school district agreed that the five million dollar payments that we would receive would be in lieu of the additional tax revenues that would otherwise be generated by those abatements. So to bring it full circle to our discussion of abatements, that five million dollars is is intended, it was intended at the time. it was intended at the time, it says right in the agreement, it was intended to, and I'm going to read just from the agreement, "The payments hereunder," that's the $5 million, "are made as compensation to the board for additional property tax revenues that the board would have received if the city had not authorized tax exemptions for certain projects, certain abatements or incentives, assuming that those projects would have been constructed without the city tax exemption." So that's, that's how we tie these stadium $5 million payments with the, with the CRA, what, what we should be getting in reimbursements for tax abatements. Here's the key terms of the 99 agreement. Again, annual $5 million payments to the, from the city to the school district to make up for those additional tax revenues. It's a 20-year term with a cap on the city's, you know, liability of, of $100 million. So the city is making those annual payments of $5 million for 20 years. The board agrees to approve any tax exemptions or incentives that are offered by the city, provided that 25%, that, that there's a 25% payment in lieu of taxes for new CRAs. And, and eventually, in a 2012 amendment, we set a 27% payment in lieu of taxes for TIFs from, from developers. So, so those are payments coming from the developers. What I'll show you in a second is that 25 and 27% don't make up the full amount that we should be paid, and that's where the $5 million is intended to make up that shortfall and essentially make us whole. Then we waive any notice, income tax distributions, we, we waive our right to approve those agreements. Some other key terms that haven't been, so far, all of these terms have been followed, basically, by the parties for the last 20 years. We're receiving those annual $5 million payments, and the city is continuing to offer exemptions, excuse me, abatements, and, and they have our approval to do so. Some terms that haven't been followed in this agreement. It was understood at the time that the parties would meet and confer on an annual basis to make sure the school district was being made whole. And that's not happening, it hasn't happened for some time. Another thing that hasn't happened, in addition to the $5 million, the city agreed that it would provide certain municipal services, including school nurses and school crossing guards and school SROs. SROs continue to be provided to the school district, but, but the city has stopped, and it's stopped for probably the last decade or so, to provide services, including school nurses and crossing guards. Not only have they stopped providing those services, we're now paying the city out of general fund dollars amounts each year for nurses for our schools and for our school crossing guards. So, the annual impact to the school district is, we're not only not getting those services for free, we're paying the city close to, more than $2 million to have those services provided in our schools. So that, that's compensation that, that again, hasn't occurred to the school district for at least the last decade. You know, to be clear, and I, I want to clarify, the agreement's very clear that that doesn't constitute a breach by the city. The, the extent of those services, per the agreement, is determined by the city, and the failure to provide the services is not a breach, again, expressly under the agreement. So lastly is the financial background. And, and really, the question that our team is trying to answer, and what I'm trying to answer for you, is how are we doing? Is this a good deal for us or not? Is this a good deal for the school district? Before I get there, I want to make sure that there's a, a clear understanding of the difference between two types of levies that benefit the school district, property tax levies. One is a fixed rate, and one is a fixed sum. Those are, those are two distinct types of levies, and we have both, most school districts in Ohio have, have some combination of both. But there's a significant difference in that, for a fixed-rate levy, it's essentially a percentage, in, in layman's terms, it's a percentage of the, of the taxable property that, that is in the city, that is then paid to the school district. It's a percentage, essentially. Versus a fixed-sum levy is an amount that the taxpayers have agreed to fund the school district, a set amount, regardless of whether the tax base grows or, or declines. We will get that money, those, those dollars, regardless of the amount of tax, taxable property in the city. Again, as properties are abated in the city, those abated properties may be excluded from the properties that are participating in paying in those fixed sums. So in other words, non-abated property tax, taxpayers have to pay a higher amount, but the school district receives the same amount. If, if we have a $25 million fixed-sum levy, we get that $25 million. Make sense?
Just one thing to add, on the fixed-rate levy, it's subject to the cost-reduction factor, depending on all those agreements, and that does not grow, the revenue does not grow with inflation, only new construction.
Yes.
I just want to make the, make that point.
Thank you also for that. So as I said, we have both, the school district has both fixed-sum and fixed-rate levies. This is a summary of the current levies that we have in place, the inside millage and current expense levies, you know, total to 31.94 mils, our fixed-sum levies, $65 million levy, a $48 million levy, and so on and so forth, add up to 30.76 mils. When we talk about how we're doing, what our team has been discussing is, again, consider, of, of, this is, this pie chart represents all the real estate taxes that Cincinnati taxpayers pay. With respect to the fixed-sum levies, the school district is receiving those funds. So, we're doing fine on those. I mean, that, the fact that properties are abated or not is a significant impact on the, abated or non-abated property owners, I don't want to diminish that, but with respect to the school district, we still receive those funds. And again, a portion of your property taxes are paid to other municipalities, non-CPS entities, the city, the county, I don't know, I think the zoo and the children's services, important entities in the city, but, but I'm not, for the purposes of this discussion, I'm not concerned about that. What we're concerned about is that portion that relates to the fixed-rate levies or the percentage levies. That, that's what we've been looking at, making sure that these abatements, when, when we talk about being made whole, that's what we want to make sure we're made whole on, is that 33%, at least in 2018, making sure that 33% is paid. And so if you look back over the last, I think this is six years.
Excuse me, excuse me.
Yes.
Could you just repeat that, because I, I marked the diagram, I think incorrectly. Where are we being made whole?
It's that, it's that pull-out portion, it's the fixed-rate.
So that, okay.
Yes.
And then where are we not?
I'm sorry.
The ones you're worried about?
I, I misspoke. We are being made whole, we, we receive the full amount of our fixed-sum levies, the emergency levies, the dollar levies, what, regardless of what the tax base is in, in the city. Where we need to make sure that we're made whole is on the percentage levies or the fixed-rate levies. So that 31.94 mils, that 33% is what, at least in 2018, we would, we would look to be made whole. In order for us to be made whole, taxpayer, 33% of that tax, that, that taxpayer's total tax bill should be paid to us. And, and if you recall, we're not getting that, because the pilot agreements with the developers only add up to a, a 20, a requirement to pay 25% of their taxes, or if it's a TIF, 27%. And that's where the city agreement says we'll get an additional $5 million to make that up. And so, if you look over the last six years, and, and if you look at that last column, again, this is the total estimated TIF value, CRA value, the total abated properties, the estimated foregone taxes, plus the pilots, that's the 25 and 27% that the developers are paying, we are receiving those in cash receipts. Then that last column is where we should be, we should, you know, the, the estimate 20 years ago was that we would need $5 million to be made whole. And you can see in some years, we've, we've done okay, and in other years, that $5 million does not make us whole. Does that make sense? And you could go back all the way, that, one other concerning point that I think the treasurer pointed out in the Finance and Audit Committee meeting is, you look at the growth of CRAs that are being offered and TIFs, just from, even from 2012 to 2017, it, it has significantly increased, I think it's a, yeah, 300% increase on the CRAs, and about a 200% increase on the, a little more than a 200% increase on the TIFs. Again, that last column is what we're looking at as to whether or not we're being made whole or not. You can see in some years we are, and in some years we're not. This is an example, again, we, we did this for the Finance and Audit Committee, I, I may come back to this, but, but this shows you how a pilot is calculated, and, and essentially, at least for one taxpayer with an, with a, a baited value of $1 million, you know, how much we're short just on one taxpayer. Two more points I want to make before we, we kind of make our recommendations. It is sometimes said that the school district is additionally benefiting from these abatements because of the way that the state calculates the state foundation funding formula. And, and so that abated properties are not included, I think, in the value of property for the city, and, and therefore, you know, that has a positive impact to us with respect to state foundation funding. What I would say is, that, that's not how we want, that's not how we think the make-whole calculation should be made. It's speculative to us as to how the state is going, going to fund schools, even next year. And, and we don't think that that should be included. The city sometimes has argued in the past that, that state foundation effect should also be calculated into our kind of make-whole calculation, and, and we strongly disagree with that. The second piece is, and again, I said I'd come back to this, but recall that there's all these other abatements that the city is able to grant without our permission, you know, without asking the school district anything, and those have a negative impact on the school district. So the residential CRAs, for example, this is just an analysis over the last three years, you know, close to a million, excuse me, close to a billion dollars of abated residential property in the city, and, and school board doesn't get to say yes or no on that, and that has a negative impact to the school district, you know, in the amount of close to $7.5 million. That's a lot of money that we're foregoing, and again, you don't, you don't get an up or down vote on, on those residential abatements. So, my, my point, and, and the reason I kind of connect those two, is when the city says, you know, you're getting all this extra funding from the state, first of all, I think that's speculative, and, and it has a positive impact, but not a, not a huge net positive impact. I, I think another point is, when the city offers all these residential abatements, that has a net negative impact on us, and I, I don't anticipate that they're going to want to negotiate to reimburse the board for that, because they'll say, we don't have to ask the board's permission for that. I'm going to conclude with some of our recommendations for negotiations, and, and I don't think I'm giving away launch codes or anything like that. This is, this is the administration's kind of first, first attempt to, you know, open, open the dialogue, but, but these are some things we think that should be kept in mind in these upcoming negotiations.
Excuse me, could we call them considerations instead of recommendations?
Yes.
Because the tendency would be that we are going to follow your recommendations.
This is administration's, yeah, our team's kind of considerations.
Considerations, I appreciate that.
Sure. Primarily, our, our consideration is that we should be looking to make sure the district is made whole. That's, that's kind of our mantra, is, is trying to make sure, and, and if we're made whole, then, then the process of offering abatements, in our view, is, is really the city's responsibility. They have a whole economic development department, it's not really within the core mandate of the school district, provided the school district is being made whole. So, so that's, that's our overarching consideration. Thank you. Here's some more kind of detailed, and this is, this, not all of these come from us, I think the board has already mentioned some of these. One is to reduce the term of the agreement. It's really hard to anticipate, you know, what's going to happen 20 years from now, and we think 20 years is too long. So, too difficult to predict. School district funding, as well as the demographics of the city, we recommend a shorter term. We recommend an annual recalculation of the reimbursement rate for the school district as the millage changes. As that, we, we, in our view, we should be made whole, and we should be made whole in the real amount that we're losing, and, and that should be recalculated on an annual basis to determine what millage should be paid to the school district. We strongly recommend avoiding in-kind elements to reimbursement, and that would include, like, the nurses and the crossing guards. Again, very difficult to value, and just, you know, these should be actual dollars, general fund dollars that are coming into the school district, in our view, and then we can determine how best to spend them.
I'm curious about that one in terms of how it was written in the agreement, because I don't recall it stating directly in-kind. So, and if, how is that allowed legally? How is that considered not a breach if they say in the contract they're going to do it, and then they back out? I'm not quite sure if I understand.
It's a question I routinely get, as, as the legal department is often accused of, of dropping the ball, but, but it is expressed in the agreement. I, I mean, if, if there was a way for us to enforce the agreement and, and require the city to provide nurses and crossing guards, we would be doing it. The agreement actually provides that the city would get to determine the level, the level of funding, I'm going to try to find it here for you, so I can read directly, just one second.
While he's looking at that, it's, it's pretty similar language we use, where we say it's subject to annual appropriations or to funding, they just said they didn't have funding to do it, so they didn't have to do it.
So, this is from the City Services Agreement. It says, "In each year during the term, the city agrees to provide municipal services in the form of school nurses, school crossing guards, and school resource officers." It goes on to say in the next paragraph, "However, the city," excuse me, it says, "The extent of these services will be determined by the city following discussions with the board and shall be conditioned on annual appropriation of funds for the purposes as required by law. Provisions of services by the city of a nature or extent different than that requested by the board does not constitute a breach or default." Why would we agree to this? Hard to say, my, my best guess is that this wasn't a lawyer dropping the ball, this was a, a conscious and intentional agreement of the parties to say, you know, we, we've gotten where we need to be in terms of the school district being made whole, and the city saying, we're not going to do this, the school district saying, we really want you to do this, and this is the language that was agreed on. That, that's my best guess, I wasn't there at the time, I wasn't counsel, but, you know, it's, it's not uncommon for us to reach agreements where, as long as, as the parties are fully informed of kind of what we're agreeing to, who knows why they threw this in? It does seem illusory, I, I get that, but, but, I, I don't know. I mean, that, that's expressed in the agreement, that, that, that's not a breach.
Well, it's not a good faith effort either.
Perhaps. Some, some other recommendations? Excuse me, considerations? Okay. With respect to the $5 million, again, our, our position is that the city essentially has, has supported or funded or subsidized these agreements, and that you could have developers paying up to the full millage that, that would make us whole. It's really up to the city. I, I'm not as focused on, on getting cash payments from the city as I am, again, that, that mantra of making sure we're made whole. However, there's 20 years of agreements that have already been agreed to, and were agreed to sort of on the condition and with the understanding that the school district was receiving $5 million a year, which in part made us whole. And so there's got to be a, in our view, there should be a consideration about, about how those, I, I don't think you can go back to a developer and say, we're changing your deal, and so the city has to be able to honor those agreements, you know, as we do also, but, but also provide compensation for the school district as those things, as those former agreements start to fall off. We think we should seek reimbursement for the district's administrative costs on these agreements. That was also, I believe, a recommendation or, or a directive of the Finance and Audit Committee. And finally, we are very concerned about extensions or amendments of CRAs. New legislation that's been passed in Ohio allows these agreements in some cases to be extended. Just, just for me, it's very hard to understand how that's spurring development, extending, you know, again, if you go back to the, the sort of premise that an abatement should be used to spur development that would not otherwise occur, it's not clear to me why we're extending agreements in, in that, again, that development's already been built, that, that developer has already made the decision to go ahead. It, it's really hard for us to understand in some cases why these agreements are extended or amended, and that's why we think the board should have some approval over that.
Dan, I'm sorry, could you go back to my example?
Yes.
Please, for a second.
Yes, there it is.
Yes. So, do you remember when the city, the ACIS meeting where they came up, they were doing a presentation, they would show pictures of properties, and they, they would say that once these properties become on the tax rolls, the district will receive six, eight, 10 times more revenue than they would? And it simply isn't true, simply because of the way our fixed-rate or fixed-sum levies are established. So I'm trying to show a mathematical example why this is true. So under a property that's a million dollars in value, abatement is a million dollars, the assessed value, the taxable value is 35% of that. So under $1 million, the taxable value is $350,000. We would then bill that developer $8,400 a year, under our agreement and the, the rates that are in the agreement, as a pilot payment, until that, until that project is complete... that are in the agreement, as a pilot payment until that, until that project is complete and then the county puts it on the tax duplicate, which is when they start collecting taxes directly from the property owner. So because we would only get new construction on the fixed rate side, we would only then be collecting $11,000 a year on that same $350,000 improvement. So it's not 10 times the value. And it's, I'm just simply trying to educate people to say it's not as simple as everybody thinks it is. Does that make sense? Okay. Thank you, Dan.
Questions?
Okay. Questions? Mr. Messer.
Thank you very much for that summary report. I do think this is an important conversation that we have to have. And I, so I think the, kind of the highest level is, I've got a whole list here, but maybe just starting with, so what's, what is the official process from right now to having kind of a completed agreement?
Yeah. Well, we want to make sure that we're following your direction in terms of what, what our marching orders are for negotiations. The treasurer's put together a timeline and, and in part because we would like to see, I think, this agreement negotiated before we really get into election season. And so we've got a pretty aggressive timeline on trying to negotiate. You know, I, I don't know how far off we are with respect to the, the city's position on some of these issues. We, we haven't had those discussions at this point. I, I think that, that's a big, that's a big factor in, in trying to anticipate for you how long, you know, it would take to negotiate, but in, in terms of, I, I mean, we can be prepared fairly quickly to put a draft together to send to the city, which, which incorporates some of these considerations.
Can I continue?
Go ahead.
Yeah. And, and, you know, I think, you know, philosophically, yes, I have opinions on abatements, CRAs, et cetera, but I think in the role that I sit in, my biggest concern is that the needs of our district can be fulfilled from a financial standpoint as these abatements go. That's why I think that the, the, the landing of this plane is much less tied to the election as it is tied to the completion of our strategic plan. And, you know, I think that if we work towards that August timeline, I think there's a very compelling story to say, we're not just out there debating whether you should do abatements or not. I mean, I think people could be all over the board. We still, we have to fund our schools and we're in a growing district and our expenses are not going to go down, they're going to go up. So I think, you know, the, the more we can start these conversations with that long-term view of Cincinnati Public Schools, where we are today, based on the projections, here's where we will be in 20 years and guess what? There's a whole lot of capital improvements, buildings, brick and mortar and everything that goes with that, that has to be considered. We're going to look kind of short-term out and, and so based on that, we're going to need X number of dollars of incremental money over the coming years. And as a result, then therefore, these are the dollars that we're going to have to have. And I think it takes the emotion out because what we're trying to do is make sure that our school and, schools today, but then our, our schools going forward with a growing district and, and I just met somebody else who was in the customer service office yesterday when I was in the building. We got three kids from that family now coming into the district that were not in public schools, that are officially next year because they heard of the great things happening. This is a great thing and I think we have to make sure that in the upfront, we tell that story. I think, you know, as we then talk about, you know, the rest of the abatements, I totally get it that the residential is outside and, and, you know, I made that point just because, I think that was a learning for, even for some of our audit committee members. They thought we had to sign off on that. But it is, as Michelle Dillingham stated earlier, it is germane to us because, you know, I think as you think about incremental money that we may need, a taxpayer who is paying $5,000 a year today, if they were sharing that burden with non-abated properties, tomorrow they could still pay $5,000, would be no more incremental funds, but we as a district would be receiving the additional funds we would need for growth if we didn't give away the farm in the close to $1 billion in residential abatements. And I think I would be personally interested in having a conversation with city council, even though that's not, you know, formalizing a conversation to help them understand the impact of those residential abatements also to the dollars needed for our future, future growth. And then, you know, I, I have in here, you know, some of the things that I'd love to learn about their process of the things that we do have responsibility for. You know, I think the, the one so questionable or I guess subjective is the determination of whether a, a project would happen or not without the sub-avatements. It shouldn't have to deal with whether or not they can't, they contribute to somebody's campaign fund or, or whatever. What is their objective criteria and process? How is that quality insured and are they willing to share that with us? And then how do they? I'd love to know when some of those come to us at 10 years and then some come to us at 30 years. You know, what, what determines how long they are, are making those? And I haven't been able to find out how those decisions are made. You know, I'd also, to your point, you kind of alluded to this, I, I'd love to know how far apart we are. Again, not knowing kind of where the city's position is, you know, I, I think, you know, that to get, get us to that August timeframe, if there was a way to say we're aligned on a few of these key principles, might allow us to focus a little bit more on the areas where there might be issues. But I, I just think that, you know, establishing that timeline that hopefully gets us to, to landing this and having a, a conversation that this is about our strategic plan, it's about funding the future of CPS is important. And then the last piece, even though I know it's not explicitly called out in here, something that I think has been new as a vehicle for the purpose of avoiding taxes, and I think they do great work in many areas is the Port Authority. And I think, you know, if you put a, you know, a skyscraper under the Port Authority to avoid something and that, it just feels like funny math, you know, what is the purpose of that entity as it relates to dollars that would be potentially due to CPS? Why are some of those deals being done with the Port Authority? And how are those potentially maybe very specifically called out in the agreement so that we just ensure transparency and openness in those deals as well?
Thank you.
Mr. Morosky?
Thank you, President Jones. So, Mr. Hoang, I would love your opinion on some, and if you would feel comfortable giving it. Obviously, I paid attention and I've read through your packet on the suggestions or, what are we calling them?
Considerations.
Considerations. So to Board Member Messer's point regarding timeline, and I agree with Mr. Messer, that the, the need to have this wrapped up around the time the strategic plan is announced is probably a good line, end zone to look at. I think the most fundamental question to answer first, which we've never talked about, is whether or not we want to have an agreement. And it seems, speaking for myself, that it seemed, it appears more beneficial numbers-wise to have an agreement of some kind than not. And what I'm asking, my question to you is, in your professional legal opinion, in a situation where there's no agreement, and I've conferred with colleagues to the north in Columbus, looking at that CPS where they don't have an agreement of this kind and the city hands out 15-year abatements, to your point in here, where the number is zero to the district, that that doesn't seem to benefit schools. So the question would be, in your professional legal opinion, if you wouldn't mind, would it be more beneficial for us to have an agreement at at least 33%, which is the new number it appears, to renegotiate year by year? If that goes up, it goes up. If it goes down, it goes down. This whole harmless idea versus not having one?
Yeah. So I, just in my opinion, everybody has an opinion on abatements. In my opinion, they can be an effective tool and, and especially when we're living in a world where we're frankly competing, you know, for development in the city of Cincinnati and we're competing against our suburban neighbors, we're competing against, you know, over the river, where, where everybody's got the ability to do abatements, I, I think they can be an effective tool to draw development. Whether or not we should be involved on a case-by-case basis, I think depends a lot, to your point, on how much we trust the city to be doing that. But I don't think it's necessarily within our core mandate as a school district to analyze, you know, what neighborhoods need, we need to incentivize development and what, what neighborhoods are doing okay, at least currently. I, I'm not sure we have the expertise to be doing that and, and so, provided we maintain a good partnership and a kind of a watchful attitude toward the abatements that are, that the city is offering, I don't think we should do a 20-year deal, but I, I do think giving the city the ability to let the economic development department do its work is okay, provided we're being made whole. I, I really think, it's tempting to say, I think, that, that there's some magic number that, that would maximize the amount of development and also maximize the tax revenues, that, that some actuary could come up with that. The city, I think, should absolutely be doing that analysis and looking for that magic number, but in my view, the school district's dollars should not be at risk in that. We should not be playing that game. We should insist on being made whole for our dollars and, and allow the city's department to then, hopefully, increase development in the city. That's my opinion.
I was happy to see that piece about the timeframe because the, a few times this has come up here, and back to that first ACES meeting that Ms. Wagner referenced, something I've always kind of stood by, that it should not be 20 years, five, 10, something of that nature. The, the re-looking at it every year, I appreciate it. It's something that wasn't in my thinking, it seemed to make sense. I, for one, think it probably makes sense to have some sort of agreement for all the reasons you outlined, but definitely not that long. So thanks for answering.
Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Bolton?
Thank you. Appreciate it. All these considerations are really good to anticipate and consider.
I wish I could see it's my PowerPoint from up here, Fred.
I, I wish you could. Appreciate it. One thing that would help me is if you just made a list of what we can't do, because it's, they're sort of embedded in here as to what we would be unable to do or we couldn't, we couldn't ask for this because legally it's impossible, but for my simple mind, just give me a list of what we, we absolutely can't ask for. And we did agree the last meeting we had that we would have a fact finding for the community to at least come and present some of the community input that's circulating in any number of organizations out there, whether it's the education justice folks or there's a tax work group that I attended last night. There is a movement out there and that it will impact how these negotiations go. I mean, we, we are the deciders, to quote Mr. Bush, but, but the reality is there is something in the atmosphere and we have to be cognizant of that. The in-kind, I'm, I'm with that to a certain degree, except just as we've gotten into capital improvements that we need for pedestrian safety or what this, there's things that only the city can do for us. In that area, I'd like to be able to have some sort of a, an ability to say, could you spend a certain amount of money on this or, or this, on a general physical piece as it pertains to the safety around our schools? Because again, we got a million dollars and they only spent $400,000 of that grant and so it seems to me we need to increase our ability to do that. The encouragement for development is needed, but right now we're subsidizing development and that's a big difference and I think that's part of the, part of the angst that people are experiencing. Also, I don't, I'm unclear about the 90, and I don't need to, I can talk afterward. I didn't quite understand the 1996 role that was played there with that particular agreement and I just need some more information. And do we have the ability to say no? When it comes before us? I mean, the process is over. I mean, we can symbolically vote no, but if, if we had a majority, as Mrs. Bates has proven during the Cranley Rule, I will vote against every one of them. Is it, Susan Cranley, not John Cranley? Are we able to say no by the time it gets to us? I mean, what if we did say no? What if a majority of the board said no?
Right now, isn't it that the only vote per the 99 agreement is that we're just voting whether or not we are allowed to, that we're voting to bill them? That's not an approval. You know, a change could be that we actually change to where we would be individually voting to permit it or not.
Right. And so my point is that, that is a role that I hear in a number of organizations that somehow we could stop these things by the time it gets to us. So we have to be able to explain that to a certain extent and know that if that's, it remains the case, then we'd have to be able to have some influence on it before it gets to us. In that, you can only get in an agreement, I would assume, whether it's length of them or the nature of it or what have you. By the end, what can we, or what could we do?
You know, thinking, hearing Ms. Bates talk about that, you know, it's, I just have like this vision of Wizard of Oz because I don't really know who's behind the curtain and I don't know what's going on behind the curtain. And it's not that, that I think badly of anyone, I just have, I don't have anyone even visualize, visualize who's leading this process and I think that's kind of a, a problem. And my question is, I wonder if it might be helpful if we ask some of these questions to somebody in authority at the city, because I've talked to a few council people and they're like, well, I, I, I mean, I, I think, I mean, I'm not sure. Well, maybe, let me check. Who is the person? And I would say it's whoever Oscar's replacement is.
Phil Denny.
Yep. And I wonder if we bring him, ask him if he would come and we say, hey, here's a few questions that, that would help us understand this pro, sorry, I'm talking this way. Some questions that would help us understand and people who care about the success of our schools, et cetera, and have them talk about, you know, why would you do something for 30 years? That's one question I have. How do you objectively determine whether a project would happen or not? You know, what is, you know, is there a process to ensure there's not kind of contamination of the process where people are playing funny games behind the scenes? You know, I would love to know, because I think it would perhaps give us a lot more confidence and comfort in the process if A, we kind of knew who, who, who they were and then B, they could help us understand maybe the methodology that they use. And I would be also interested in their thoughts of the existing agreement, you know, putting on, you know, a hat of someone who potentially cares about schools and that type of thing. You know, when the city came before and we asked what changes they thought based on the, the 99 agreement, what changes they recommended, they said none, but technically that wasn't the person who was responsible for the, the program.
I would, just to finish, I was going to say the, I would say that already we've demonstrated more transparency than the city has. So there you go, which isn't saying much. But, but if that were the case, maybe that's part of the fact finding or maybe that's preliminary discussions, but once these negotiations begin, that's it. We will not be able to have multiple circles negotiating. I mean, it's kind of, so we have to really make all these sorts of decisions early to, to create a, a strategy or a, or a effort or a schedule. Thank you.
Yes. So I've, I've heard a couple of maybe potential assignments, I don't know, we'll wait and see when that happens, but also I think this, this is, this subject lies in finance committee at this point. And so I would encourage us to continue, for finance committee to continue to work through some of these concerns with our legal counsel and our treasurer and then come back and we can have another full conversation or presentation, however the committee recommends that. Is that good?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Thank you.
Great. Thank you. Yeah, Dan. As, as Daniel takes a deep breath as he leaves.
He loved every minute of it.
All right. So our next topic for discussion... So, um, our next topic for discussion is around the recommendations that we received in our packets from our superintendent on the pilot of early start times and financial responsibility. Now, I do want to clarify that we weren't, it, the intention was not to put it on the agenda for us to yay-nay, or whatever, but more to provide an opportunity for board members to respond to the recommendations. But I also recall that we had redirected this back to student achievement. So, I'm going to ask, I would like to ask, that our superintendent be given an opportunity to present, um, the recommendations, and then if Ms. Bolton would be so kind as to maybe clarify kind of student achievement and what's going on at that level. And if we want to have some discussion, I'm not asking for that full-depth discussion, unless we want, but just so, because this is a public conversation. And it was made public, and we want to make sure that we're communicating as a full board and in public. So, why don't we start with Superintendent?
Yes, thank you. So, as we think about transportation for the 2019-2020 school year, um, we're very much interested in making sure that our sites are not short-sighted and focused just on one school year, but on multiple years. And so, if you could go to the next slide for me, please, or do I need to move down there? Thank you. Thank you. So, just as when we had the conversation regarding Mercy, the board charged the administration to come back with a Westside Strategy, and not just a recommendation or a suggestion specifically and only for Mercy. And so, included in that Westside Strategy, we talked about Mercy, we talked about Roberts, Westwood, Leap, the overcrowdedness at both Roberts and Dater Montessori, and the current Gamble Building. So, with that as the frame of reference in terms of how the board charged the administration to do their work, the thought around the approach for transportation also needs to be a comprehensive approach. This approach would include the very specific things that the board, parents, and community have been concerned about, around safety, efficient services, prompt communication, the late start, bell times, equity as it relates to bell times, elementary service, high school costs, and then, um, school boundaries. And I put in here four regions, only because I was brought to my attention that the Student Achievement Committee talked about this idea in terms of regions, and some thoughts around the boundary lines, thinking about different specific regions. So, what I'm going to present to you is a comprehensive approach, and not just addressing the late-start conversation. So, the first recommendation is to move forward with the implementation of OnScreen by VersaTran, thank you, Susan Bunty, to track bus, um, location, which addresses the safety of our students, so that we are able to tell exactly where our students are, as well as be able to track the arrival and departure time of our buses, which would help us identify how efficient we are being with their services. The second recommendation is to, quite honestly, do things to ensure that we have on-time arrival to school and on-time departure leaving school. Um, there is a significant interest in reducing the amount of travel time for our young people, as you saw through the presentations by Sarah Trimble Oliver, as well as Lauren Johnson. Many of our kids are traveling way across town, which increases their travel time or rider time on a bus. And then, to really maximize the ridership on those buses. Um, there are often times that people will cite that a bus is seen driving down or through a neighborhood with very few children on it. And so, we need to make sure that we're really maximizing the ridership, and so that addresses the effective or efficient service. Recommendation three is centered around the communication system for our parents and also for our schools, in terms of the location of the buses, in terms of knowing where our kids are. And so, this is a, um, a effort that we want to have a lot of internal controls around in terms of really controlling the messaging and the customer service as it relates to communicating to our families and to our schools. The fourth recommendation is to maintain the current high school start times, with the exception of West High and Dater, to move them back to at least a 7:45 start. They start earlier than that at this time. The administration, we have no argument whatsoever in terms of the validity of the research as it relates to later start times. Uh, we do believe that we should have a comprehensive approach, and not just peel off a couple of schools and address those schools, but to look at this in a comprehensive manner. The fourth, sorry, fifth? Nope. Oh, something happened to my PowerPoint, sorry. The fifth recommendation is to go to a three-tier bell schedule for our elementary buildings. So, right now, we have some elementary schools that start at 7:30, 7:45, 8 o'clock, 8:10, 8:15, 8:30, 8:45, 9 o'clock. It is all over the place. And so, we believe that we can provide, um, a lot more efficiencies if we're able to go to a three-tier system. And these would be the three times that our elementary schools would start. And that would allow us to actually be able to reduce buses and be more efficient with our dollars. The sixth recommendation is really centered around optimization as it relates to high school, looking at the capacity of the buses. As Lauren Johnson pointed out on numerous occasions, we are not filling the buses at the high school level to their maximum capacity. Not that we want kids to be in an unsafe situation, but in many cases, the buses are significantly under, uh, its capacity. Looking at the ridership in terms of the kids who are actually riding the buses, and then the number of vehicles, being able to reduce our costs. I'd like to pass out for you, um, to be able to look at an example of high school optimization with using one particular case study, and that's Aiken. It seems like we were on an Aiken roll tonight, when we talked about the Miami Partnership with Aiken, and then the Aiken Students, and now, our example is around Aiken in terms of looking at the number of buses that we could reduce, being very efficient with our dollars, but also, um, making sure that we're providing good service. And so, the question that was constantly asked of Lauren Johnson as we were doing this work, if you reduce the number of buses, can you provide better service? And the answer was yes. And that there is a way to do this, um, in terms of really, um, looking very closely at the data, being analytical to identify how many kids are riding the bus, what's the true need, and making some adjustments. And you can see the savings that could be obtained in this way. We've also looked at Withrow, as well as Western Hills, and we believe that this is a way to provide better service, to quite honestly tighten our belt in areas that won't impact service in a negative way, and to have some real cost savings. Recommendation number seven is to be able to reduce, quite honestly, waste. And part of being able to reduce that waste would be to look at the capacity, as I just demonstrated on the optimization example, as well as going through a three-tiered system for the elementary schools. Eighth recommendation is about reducing costs and gaining efficiencies. And I've just outlined those three items that I just mentioned. Sorry about the repetitiveness. And then, the ninth recommendation, which is key and central to all of this work, is the investigation of a comprehensive school boundary review, which goes back to what the SAC committee has started in some specific regions. We believe that if we take all these things in their totality, then we can really say what we can do in terms of late start, but not to do this in isolation. Um, we did actually look at if we could make the accommodation to make some schools a later start time. And there's just such a big ripple effect for many of the other schools that was not our recommendation. Again, we don't argue with the research. We believe there should be a holistic approach, just like we used a holistic approach with the Westside Strategy as it related specifically to the Mercy site. And so, those are my recommendations.
Okay. Um, Ms. Bolton? Do you want to add anything to that, to her recommendation? You, I know you are working in tandem, so I wanted you to have a chance to speak to this.
Can report where we are with, uh, student achievement. Uh, we listed the topics that we discussed in student achievement in our minutes as to what was of concern to us. Um, I don't find fault with any of this. The vast majority of this, though, is operational and transactional. It is not transformative. And it is, in the absence of later start, is what is of concern, at least to SAC. SAC certainly wants to defer to the administration, uh, but SAC also, I believe, all three SAC members philosophically, to the point of the superintendents about the data, believes that later starts is a, is a healthy start for high school people. And that over the last two years, because of the community advocacy, and then the administration helping us, and with both the engagement piece, but most particularly with the data and what have you, um, I, I think we pursue all of these things, makes sense, certainly. And you all know how, where I've been on the transportation piece. But again, you totally isolated the possibility, and not even considered the later start. And we're here where we are because the community made demands. And fortunately, we have an effective department and director now, which is great. But five months of that does not make up for me seven years of a rough transportation road. And so, I think in SAC, we, our ending point was that we believe that the recommendation from the superintendent was too much of a, kind of a, um, let's say this, the request was to see, based upon what at least I think we heard at West High, was that there was a possibility, and we hear it again tonight, that West High and Dater could move later. The specific request then of the assignment was, were the community advocates correct when they said that from their data, they thought you could add Aiken and Withrow? And then, also, part of that assignment was, can the treasurer look to see if any of the claims that these folks have made actually financially are feasible, or even doable, or thinkable, or can it be judged? So, I, I do think, on behalf of SAC, that we probably want to say what we said in the minutes, which was that we still believe that these group, this group and our transportation people should work together, and the meetings, I think, have been since canceled, that they were having. And I think, correct me if I'm wrong, gentlemen, but we said we would like to have the people continue to work together. And that was the upshot of what our recommendation was. I, so, this does not answer the specific assignment, but it, it does address the operational issues, fortunately, and the transactional issues. I, I do think that this, I would hate to think that such a community effort and such a board effort ends in such that we can spend our time better elsewhere. I don't, I'm a little concerned about that message to both board members and also to the community. Um, and I was concerned that people said that nobody was following the process, and I was very gratified when, when it was sent back to SAC, and also when the president put this on the agenda for tonight. I think we could agree with almost all of this, except that West High and Dater shouldn't be 7:45. At least could we have something at some healthy start? And, and, and I think, I'll let some of my members on SAC speak to it. We want to continue to work on this. And to Mr. Messer's point earlier this evening, if you look, and this is, to the superintendent's point too, a comprehensive look, a long-term look. It's a long-term look without later starts. It's a long-term look of getting our ducks in a row about every single thing else, but not doing later starts. So, that is of concern to me. But more particularly, even if we look at the first year, the second year, the third year, the strategic plan, I don't see the kind of movement that we probably need to see for transportation. That's me, not what SAC talked about. But I'd be interested to, you know, hear other board members. I, I do think that SAC will meet again next week. Uh, and I spoke with members, and we are still concerned about this.
Okay, do, do you, Superintendent, did you have a response?
Yes. The administration would be happy to go back and look at Aiken and Withrow, and provide the cost that it would come at to move to a later start time.
Great.
Because there is a cost to it.
Yeah, and, and that was my question, as Ms. Bolton was talking. My question was, at what cost is this a transformational situation? And, and, and I'm saying that because while I firmly believe in the research and the data around healthy starts, I, I am concerned that, that this is consuming our dollars, you know? And, and, and I hear, and I respect, that the community, uh, has come to us with a concern. But I also believe that sometimes, that there are going to be times when we cannot meet the ass of the communities without us sacrificing something in that. So, that, that's just my feeling. I know Ms. Bates had a comment, and then Ms. Bolton will get you in.
Yeah, I mean, the, the big omission I learned at the last meeting was that the schools haven't been involved at all. Uh, that the staff and the administration of the schools have not had the opportunity to discuss these early start times and how it would affect them. And, uh, that to me is a huge concern, because here, what are we telling, you know, the schools? We know what's best for you, you know, sitting here and in our committees, but we're not in your schools, operating your schools with knowledge of your master schedules, not even to mention extracurriculars, or how these schedules affect uh, the siblings of the children who are going to be at the earlier tiers of the elementary schools. So, what I believe we really need to do is to take, is, uh, for our school staffs to be, uh, in the loop on this, because I'm not even sure if they know that this is going on, quite frankly. I mean, for instance, there's, you know, what, Walnut, even though they're an early school, their freshman football team, I think it's their freshman team, that they don't even start practice because of the need for fields for other activities until 4 o'clock. Is that team going to start practicing at 5 o'clock because of a late start time? There's a lot of consideration that we need to discuss with our school staffs and administration before we can tell them what we hear is best for them, because they need to be part of this too. And, and we have not surveyed them at all.
I don't remember whose hand was up first.
Mr. Morosky.
Mr. Morosky.
Thank you, President Jones. I hear a board member Bates is saying, and that is why we reached out to schools. Um, and I appreciate the sentiment, and I appreciate the reminder that we need to do that when we do our work. I just, I've said this a few different ways, a number of different times, but I'm just, I, I'm astounded that this much conversation about this thing that we know is good for kids' mental health continues to happen. Because I've been in this board for a little over a year now. We do a lot of things where we act like we know what's best, and we don't sit up here and talk over and over again about the need to reach out to every single individual person that exists in the district. Um, and to President Jones, I also respect that if... And to President Jones, I also respect that if, well, the thing, everything costs money. I, I get that, and I appreciate Superintendent you going to figure out what that cost is, because that is important. And Board Member Bolton has signed that over a month ago, and it never materialized. My, my only point to, there are other things that matter, and we don't do things just because of the community. I'm going to speak for myself right now. The reason I'm so supportive of this is because of what it does for kids, not because a group of community members are telling me. A group of community members have volunteered their expertise to educate me as one board member. And I've come to the conclusion, so I take issue with doing something, quote, "because the community is telling us." I'm pushing this because it's for kids. To which I would also respond, then why didn't we just tell these people no two years ago? This has taken up a lot of time to be told no. And another concern I have, and then I'll stop. And again, Superintendent, I appreciate you taking this, and we'll probably talk about it again in SAC. Another thing that I find, I think Board Member Bolton used the word disturbing or troubling, is that there are two different perceptions of how this entire process has occurred, and there's only one fact. And in a memo we received, it says that the later start group understands the information provided by them was not done in collaboration with CPS, yet the SAC minutes from the board's conversation say quite clearly, after the transportation summit, the administration, healthy starts group were to work together, they did work together as directed. That, to me, is a fundamental problem and why this conversation continues.
Well, I, I, I just need to comment on that, because I was the one who talked about that we can't all, that we can't 100% of the time meet the level of demands from the community. I, too, and I'm going to repeat that, I, too, support that. I'm a mental health professional, I have been for 40 years. I understand the research. But the, but the, but the reality of this is, what, what I'm hearing is recommendations where this particular topic is replacing what we had initially asked for, which was a rebooting of our transportation system. One of the things that I saw in the, in the information that the superintendent gave us was even a process of phasing this in. And, and so we haven't even talked about that. It's like an all or nothing situation. And I still have concerns, not only about who are we talking to in the community, because we certainly haven't talked to the broader community about it, community of parents, community of students, you know? And, and for me, that's, that's a drawback. So I'm just saying and suggesting that maybe we look at other options. You know, is there any problem with the phases of implementation? I'm not asking for a response tonight unless people want it, but can we, have we talked about phasing, phasing this in over a period of time, not just doing it all at once this year? Ms. Bolton?
Yeah, a couple of things. I'm, I'm, I'm happy that the superintendent is, is willing to pursue the assignment as given. And I think that, I think that's, I think that's good. And I'm, I'm glad that student achievement is going to meet again to, to talk about it. To the point of the cost of it, I'm a big believer in cost-benefit analysis. And if the benefit is worth it, the cost is worth it. And to the president's point about phasing, the phase that we saw, even in the presentation at West High, was not that aggressive. It was good, but it wasn't aggressive over the three years of the strategic plan. And there was not a phase in of early or late starts. It was a phase in of other things. I think the reality is, is that we know how many schools we have at early start. And the ones that we've emphasized, the, the community folks came up with the idea that there's, you know, half of our schools are already at late start, and that's fine. And there are schools that are at early start, and the reality they explained, as, as has Mr. Johnson, the issue of trying to get Walnut or Clark to move to a later start is not an option for next year, or probably maybe the following year, because it's such a size. But the four schools that we're focused on were Dater and West High, which it looks like can be moved. And the assignment was about Aiken and Withrow. And it seems to me that at the very least, we can address that together. And the reality is, I think there's tremendous savings here. It looks like we're ready to move on the three bit, you know, the three, the three-tier piece. It looks like we're ready to move on the optimization and ending waste. And this is historic in itself compared to where we've been in transportation. And I don't want to sound negative at all about the progress that's been made, but it's been made, frankly, ignoring the later start piece. And, and I, or at least saying we're not going to do it or something. And so I, I think if we can revisit that. I also know that SORDA's information that our folks have gotten was direct, and it was in February. So I think the process piece and the fact that this expertise has been offered, and indeed, the administration and that group and others were working in the matrix committee together. And I think we should embrace that and at least tie a ribbon around it, conclude it in some way that is fair to all the work that's been done. I think there is a majority on the board that won't say yes to later starts, but recognizes that later starts have a benefit. And I think the board is, as a board, going to have to take a stand about where we are on it. I don't think it can just be, let's defer to the administration and let them take the heat. This is, this is, this isn't choosing which program to put in a school. This is possibly a transform, transformative, transformative effort, and that's, it speaks to the board piece. Just like the seven bells and the seven hours and all the other stuff, and the advanced ed, all these big things we've been doing with the high schools. This is just one more that I think, and I'm glad that the superintendent is, is willing to look at it again, at least from those four schools.
The administration will come through on the assignment that was originally given.
Thank you.
Thank you. So is, are there any other comments or questions about this? And I do agree, yes, Mr. Davis.
I just got a short comment about recommendation number nine. This investigation of a comprehensive school boundary review, is that also considering high schools going back to neighborhood schools?
It isn't necessarily looking at it one way or the other, but it would include high schools. We're not saying one way or the other, how it should go, but to really look to see where lines might draw and what might happen at the high school that might be a little bit more efficient or effective in our service, just a thought.
Well, I just want to make sure that I continue to press what I think is important in regards to transportation. And as we could get our high schools back to neighborhood schools, we could make a lot of this conversation a lot less tense.
Madam President, could I just add very quickly on that one?
Yes.
Mr. Davis and, and, and Mr. Morosky and I are very, and I know Mrs. Bates in policy last year, very interested in the whole neighborhood piece for our elementaries. It's kind of interesting that even if you look at our high schools, there's almost a natural divide in our high school programming. Where in our central corridor, we have specified programs at particular high schools, whether it's SCPA, or TAFT, or Hughes, or Aiken, I think there's, I might be missing one, that are in our central corridor. But on either side, yeah, Woodward, thank you. My neighbor would hate me for forgetting Woodward. If you look at that central corridor, those are specialized programs. If you look at the other piece, we have now developed, through the superintendent's leadership, a, going to be a very competitive Montessori West. And we already have a very competitive Montessori East. And when you look at a phase, to Mr., to all of our points, if you look at Dater and West High, or you look at Withrow and Schroder, those, they have extensive wonderful programming, but the whole building isn't built around a particular way of teaching. And already you have there naturally a wet, two West Side, predominantly West Side, and predominantly East Side high schools. So thinking those three years in, it, it's kind of natural how we've almost fallen into doing something that could make sense without extraordinary means. And then if we want to go further, we could. But I, I, this is very encouraging to me. I feel better than when I came today.
Thank you. So I, I think what I'm hearing is, I heard Ms. Bolton say student achievement meets next week?
Next week.
Next week, and, and I'm sure that this conversation will continue. I think that Mr. Morosky is correct in that at some point soon, we have to take a stand on that. I, I can't speak for everybody on the board, but for me, I, all I want is something that makes practical sense, that is financially feasible and doable and equitable.
Could you repeat that, please?
I'll give it to you later. Okay. Any other questions, then, regarding that topic?
Thank you again, President Jones, for putting it on the agenda. And thank you, Superintendent.
Thanks. Okay, so we have, Ms. Bolton, we have a resolution for consideration?
Yes, we do. Lord knows where I put it now. Thanks, buddy. Mr. Davis?
Taking care of me, yes. For approval and recommendation, again, coming from both the administration and obviously from the Student Achievement Committee, a resolution adopting paper administration of Ohio State Third Grade English Language Arts Assessment and the alternate assessment for students with significant cognitive disabilities. And we have somebody in the back that got actually complimented for the engagement that was waged among the professional staff to come to this administrative recommendation. So hats off, I move for support.
Thank you, is there a second?
Second.
Messer beat me.
Messer? Okay, thank you. Any discussion or comments? Ms. Wagner, please call the roll.
Aye.
Aye.
Mrs. Bowers.
Cool.
Mr. Davis.
Aye.
Mr. Messer.
Aye.
Mr. Morosky. President Jones.
Aye. Thank you, motion carries. All right, Superintendent, do you, do you have a report?
I do. I have a good report. See if someone pulls it up for me. So Clark Montessori, while they're looking for my slides. Clark Montessori. A student received first place in the Rotary Speech Contest, which is very cool and very exciting. I attended the Rotary a couple of years ago, and it's, it's intense. And these young people who present, not just CPS, are really very, very, very good. So for us to have a, a student to win the contest is just fabulous. This is Schroder Senior, Carrington Rainey. She won $150 cash prize, and very exciting for her, we're, we're super excited. We had two other additional students who are recognized, one a Hill student. Nikki Joyner was first runner-up. And then we also had Kennedy Liggins from SCPA was second runner-up. So CPS dominated.
Yeah.
Yeah. Thank you. All right. Hughes High Schools.
Ms. Mitchell, you know you had two board members that were judges. But I don't, I don't want, I don't want to say Ms. Bates had anything to do with the fix, but...
Good, that's good. That's good, good.
I don't know two tougher judges than you two.
So Hughes STEM and Schroder students explore STEM careers, which is very exciting. Children's Hospital, their annual job shadowing took place, and our students were able to, to participate in that. So we're very excited about that. Let's put my glasses on so I can see.
Oh, I love it.
Oh, okay, I mean, I think I went a little too fast. Okay, so Schroder Women on the Move Conference was very exciting, which was a couple of weeks ago. We had our very own treasurer, Jennifer Wagner, who led one of the workshops. And so it was really cool and very exciting to hear our young people and to be able to talk with them. Tamaya Denard was the keynote for the address, and it was very moving. It was just a really great to see our young people coming together to celebrate women and young ladies within our school. And then our Neighborhood Summit, I actually think that's Board Member Eve Bolton up at the mic right there. So we participated in our, in the Neighborhood Summit at Centas a couple of weeks ago. And 50 neighborhood leaders participated in our session around our strategic plan, which was very exciting. They were able to give us input around the board's priorities. And our Early Childhood Director Vera Brooks also staffed a booth at the summit to be able to get out, give out information regarding preschool enrollment within CPS. Board Member Bolton actually led this session, which was very exciting. And that is my report.
Thank you. Do I have a motion to approve the recommendations of the superintendent?
So do we.
Is there a second?
Second.
Discussion? Ms. Wagner, please call the roll.
Mrs. Bates?
Aye.
Ms. Bolton?
Aye.
Mrs. Bowers?
Aye.
Mr. Davis?
Aye.
Mr. Messer?
Aye.
Mr. Morosky?
Aye.
President Jones?
Aye, thank you. Do I have a motion to approve the report of the treasurer?
No move.
Second?
Second.
Discussion? Ms. Wagner, please call the roll.
Mrs. Bates?
No, on Roman numeral six, and I on the rest.
Thank you, Susan Cranley.
My role model.
Your role model.
Ms. Bolton?
Aye, on all of them.
Thank you, Mrs. Bowers? Mr. Davis?
Aye.
Mr. Messer?
Aye.
Mr. Morosky? President Jones?
Aye, thank you. Inquiries and updates? Ms. Forley, can you give us an update on the budget engagement session? Which, and I want to make a correction, earlier in the meeting, Ms. Bolton, you had asked about putting an item on the agenda on April, and I said April 17. That is our budget engagement day, so, but we'll, we'll get it on the agenda. At the day after, next meeting after that.
So I've learned a lot about public engagement in the last year and a half I've been with you. But the number one thing I've learned is that people like food. So, to honor the request of Board President Jones, we will be looking to make a slight casual adjustment to the board hearing, and we'll be offering a spaghetti dinner as part of the April 17 event. We will also have the event livestream, so hopefully everyone finishes their pasta before the livestream goes live. But we will be working with you, similar to the engagement we did at Woodward a couple of weeks ago, but make it a more casual, I, I don't want to informalize it too much, but the goal being to, to really hear those comments from the public. We will also then look to, we know that there is a conflict with many of the advocates, community advocate activists, excuse me, on the tax abatement issue, who also have a meeting that night. But we'll look to find a time in the future, per the discussion tonight, to find a time for the board to hear from those folks.
That'd be great. And where, where?
Excuse me, I'm sorry, the Marison Banquet Room at 6:00 PM, 6:00 to 7:30 PM. And the event will be livestreamed.
Okay, thank you.
Superintendent, did you have a question, Mr. Morosky? Okay. Well, I had asked Superintendent, but you can certainly add to it. With, yeah. Go ahead.
All right, so, let me just say this for the record. Gamble Montessori High School will open in August. Yes, so we're very excited about that. So we have put together a project team, and that project team is representative of each department here as central office. And here are the major components that our work has been centered around. I will not give it to you, but we have a pretty thick, very small writing project plan. We actually put two administrators who are on this full-time. This is what they're doing to make sure that this project is off the ground and, and moving quickly. So our strategy includes an enrollment plan. So we want to make sure that we can, quite honestly, attract additional families who are not currently attending Gamble High School Montessori, to attract them to our school, those who are in charter schools and non-public schools. We also have a strategy around transportation, technology, communication, security, food service, staffing, athletics, and... service, staffing, athletics, and extracurricular, as well as student services, and then the financial component that goes along with all of this. So like I said, we have a pretty thick project plan that we are working through, two administrators who are assigned to that full-time to make sure that we are ready for an August opening. In thinking about Gamble High School, we are looking at adding two grade levels in terms of an actual team for 9th and 10th grade to be able to service those families who are on a waitlist. We are also looking at the waitlist very carefully to see if we're going to add a team for grades 6 and 7. No, that should be 7 and 8. 7, 8, sorry, thank you, 7 and 8th grade. If we have the numbers to support it, then we'll move forward. So we anticipate that the enrollment for the new site will be more than is currently at the site at Gamble today. So we're excited about that and aggressively working to make that happen. So earlier when we had our conversation, I guess maybe a month or two ago, around was there the expectation that the administration would also open the current Gamble building? So we have very aggressively worked to make that happen with a phase and approach. So one of the first things that we did is we looked at the waitlist for Dater Montessori, and the full 400 students who are on the waitlist, Dater wasn't their first choice. Okay, so then we, do I have that right?
We analyzed that she was the prosector.
Yes. Sarah did get that to me today, so that is correct. So what we're looking at for Gamble Elementary is three classrooms of 3 to 6, and we have to keep in mind that we have to look at this very carefully, because there is a formula that goes with Montessori on the age ranges for the number of kids who are 3-year-olds who are preschoolers, and the number of kids who are 4-year-olds, and number of kids who are kindergartners. So we have to look carefully as we staff that to make sure that we have the right complement of the age range. So we're looking at three classrooms for ages 3 to 6, one classroom for 6 to 9, and then one classroom for 9 to 12. If we receive the interest, and our first obligation is to take care of those kids on the waitlist, I will say that we are not sure that what we have done in terms of this configuration will cover everybody who's on the waitlist. I want to be very clear about that. We're trying to accommodate as many as we possibly can. In terms of staffing, to be quite honest, one of our real challenges is to find teachers who have the Montessori training to be able to go into those classrooms and start them up. We are looking at, we have actually built out a three-year phase and approach, and at its capacity, we know that we will need 27 classrooms, which we have in that school, and which will put the building at its full capacity at over 600 students, and we are continuing to build a plan to grow the school. In addition to our work with Gamble Elementary, we are working on the renovation that will need to take place for those students to move into a building that is pleasing for those kids to be there. I will say that we may not have 100% of everything done in August for either location, but where we will start our classrooms will be very nice for our students. So that's the update. We are moving as quickly as we can to make this happen. On April the 15th, there is a scheduled board presentation that lays out for you visually the entire plan around getting both of those buildings open for August. So that's just a brief update.
Ms. Bolton?
Yes, as a part of that, I think tonight in the SAC minutes, I think we listed three schools that we were recommending names, and it was the, of course, was James N. Gamble Montessori High School, but it was also James N. Gamble Montessori Elementary. So I, so that's, I think the anticipation for us was that this is an evolving Montessori, and I know that, I think it was, you know, you can, teams from other schools within our district can move together as part of the contract if they so desire, and some of that 2nd, 3rd, and 4th, those choices may have been made prior to them knowing that there would be. And so I would encourage us to contact those families too, because I think, I think one of the dreams was that it would be all, I know it's not the right Montessori language, and I'm not a Montessorian, but it was like we would have a K-12 experience on the west side, and that can only happen in two buildings. So, and in the, in the sale of it, in the branding of it, I think that would be great. I know we have other issues to address too, but I would really like a re, you know, like you're doing, concentrating on how we can make that be the Montessori, which is so important to the westsiders.
Yeah. I will say that, I would just like to give a special recognition to our administration because when we were asked, can you, can you open two buildings, two sites in August? I was hesitant, and the next day after the board meeting around the table, the team just hunkered down and said, how can we make this happen? And to accommodate our families. So trust me, it is a huge lift to open two sites when we anticipated opening only one. So just want to acknowledge the administration for all of their hard work to make this happen. We still have a long way to go.
Wonderful. Thank you. Anything else Superintendent on your report?
No.
Okay. Mr. Morosky, did you want to add to that?
No, I just think it's awesome, so kudos. Those are my other kudos for the day. But no, I just wanted to bring up, and I know a number of us have had conversations down in the community about this, so, about the Liberty Street Diet, the Liberty Street issues that are in the news. Obviously, it's not our business to dictate, right, how many lanes are on what. To Mr. Messer's point earlier, some things are out of our control. I was curious, and I wanted to bring up, not for lengthy discussion necessarily, but if it was in the board's appetite to take some kind of position on it because of Rothenburg, because of our recent struggles with students getting struck by cars on roads that are designed to be freeways, because of recent multiple crashes on that Liberty Street. So I was just curious, because I know a lot of us have had conversations with community activists, over-the-rond community council people, folks that are sort of charged with influencing these decisions, if that was something that my colleagues were interested in taking a position on, in learning more about, et cetera, as far as it relates to Rothenburg specifically, but then of course, surrounding areas where a lot of our students are.
Okay. Comments? Mr. Davis?
I appreciate you bringing it up, Mr. Morosky, and I think it's important that we take a stand for our children in over-the-rond, and from what I know of the Liberty Street Road Diet, it would make it safer for our kids, particularly at Rothenburg, but really throughout the whole neighborhood for all of our over-the-rond schools.
Ms. Bates?
I did read, you know, the summary of the plan, and I would certainly need a whole lot more information before I would express my support or non-support one way or the other, and also input from, you know, Rothenburg and, you know, even SCPA and the other schools that would be involved to see if this, this would help alleviate some of the, some of the concerns regarding safety for our students, because that's, that's first and foremost. So, yeah, I think it's worthy of consideration, but I would need a lot more information.
Yes. Mr. Messer?
Yes. Having served two terms as president of that neighborhood, I will tell you that this is long overdue. It hasn't been very long, frankly, and I have the photo right here of cars going so fast that one flipped on its roof, and that was the second time in just a few weeks. These cars fly through there, and our children, I mean, this was the case back then, I mean, it's like the game Frogger, for those of you old enough to remember that. A, there's not a lot of crosswalks on many of those streets, and we lived on Republican, there was not, and there were lots of young families that lived on either side of us, and you were taking your life into your hands to go across. And I have seen firsthand our students crossing in multiple spots where it's not safe, there's, it's not well-marked, and when you have seven lanes, it is purely, let's face it, it was done at a time when nobody wanted to be in over-the-rond. So it was a connector highway between 71 and 75 that often brought, you know, people would make, make statements about our community being, oh, full of drug addicts and that type of thing. 98%, or there was some crazy statistic, of the drug deals that were there and busted were people who didn't live in our neighborhood because of this thoroughfare going through, and I just think it is a ticking time bomb, as I wrote personally to members of council and people at the city to, I mean, it just doesn't make sense to send seven lanes through the center of a very populated and increasingly populated neighborhood, especially, and, you know, it is still 70% diverse, and that 70% are families with young children.
Okay, so I think we need to decide what, what is the pleasure of the board and how we follow up with this, and is that in the form of some assignment? If we're looking for more information? Yes, Mr. Morosky?
I have a suggestion, because I, I take Mr. Messer at his word because he's more familiar with that whole neighborhood now and structure than I certainly am. I tend to be kind of more like Ms. Bates on this one. I would like to know more, so I don't, I mean, I don't know if it is an assignment to, to have somebody meet with folks that are connected to the issue now on the council now, or community activists that have been a part of the conversation, so that if we decide to take a position in the messengers of kids, to Ozzy's point, then we can. There are certainly any number of people that all of us know who are tied to this that we could have folks get with.
Well, the person who called me, which I'm sure he called probably other board members, was Derek Bowman. Bowman, is that his name? Derek Bowman. So I, I think he would be, in my opinion, the person we would call back, since he's the one who reached out to us. But, so I think in, maybe in assignment, when we get there, is to ask the Superintendent to assign someone to follow up on that. Yes, Mr. Morosky?
In the spirit of not overburdening the Superintendent, not saying that she's not the one...
We can do it, yeah.
I was saying, or have somebody come to Student Achievement even, and have the committee recommend something after that.
I support that. I support that. Thank you.
Is that, okay. I'll assign it to us.
You're right, we don't want to overburden. We already...
She's opening like 16 schools in the next two months.
We're on assignment diet.
Okay, all right. We got you. That, that works. Yes. Okay, so how about, well, we got to get him invited, so we'll work on that. But anyway, any other inquiry is an update?
Yep, just real quick, I know, I love how this board works, where everybody kind of just pitches in and helps, and I happen to be available, so I went to TAFT with the Superintendent regarding the complaint that was raised by one of our staff on social media. And I would just like to say that I found the site manager and the people of Turner Construction to be extremely supportive and cooperative, and genuinely, I felt that they cared about our children and doing whatever was they could do to minimize any impact. The learning for me was, I assumed that the reason I couldn't turn right on Ezra Charles was because of that, and it turns out, and it jogged my memory, that when I was Community Council President, they were coming in every other month, we're like, again MSD, saying, in a couple of years, we're going to be replacing these 100-year-old wood water supplies. Well, guess what? It all happened at the same time, and it was coming right down there. That was going to happen anyway. If you saw what the before looked like, you probably wouldn't drink our water, but, so, and then on top of that, there was...
Be careful.
There are a couple other trucks that were there, and I asked about that, and they said, oh, well, that's actually Verizon doing something that's, again, completely not germane to what we're working on. So it's kind of a comedy of errors there, but I saw them proactively saying, we're going to make sure all those parties are working together, so that Turner is going to kind of quarterback them working in harmony and then mitigating any issues with our children. Their truck was right behind with numbers all over the place of who to call with complaint, and I loved their process, which they said every week, they go through every single complaint and do a risk mitigation and follow-up. They had been meeting with the principal, they've now decided to meet with staff, and so they had their meeting tonight, which I was going to go to if we didn't have executive session, but one teacher showed up. So it sounds like it may have been resolved, so that's a good thing, and the one who was originally making the complaint didn't show up, so I'm assuming that was resolved as well, fingers crossed. But I just wanted to give that update on that situation.
Madam?
Thank you.
Just on that, as a person that, and I appreciate the Superintendent and Member Messer taking the lead on it, but as a person that lived through construction and still had to teach next to it within the same building, you really do need to watch and find a way to be supportive of the air quality in the classrooms. There are things that we can buy and that can run during the time that the children are in those rooms, and that's what we had to do at Wyoming during the reconstruction, both in the middle school and also at the high school, because it is the air quality as well as the noise and the, you know, and the nuisance of it, but it's the air quality that's, and that will only get worse. That will only get worse, and there could be some proactive things. Certainly, we had like teachers who had asthma or something, we put it in their classroom with the kids, that proportion of our children that have breathing issues anyway. Please look into that. Thank you.
Okay. Ms. Bates, and followed by Mr. Morosky.
Yes, in light of the TAFT investigation, I would like to refer to Policy Committee, the development of a policy for the use of social media when representing oneself as being affiliated with the district.
Okay. Okay, thank you. Mr. Morosky?
So I have a few, but none of them are huge, and one of them's to me, so, first is I would assign to Student Achievement Committee to reach out to Derek Bowman to present at, Ms. Bolton, you said next week, it's not, it's two weeks away, correct, unless we change the date?
We're having a special one next week. Mr. Davis and I sort of signed that over here.
Is this...
We'll let you vote later, relax.
Are we, am I being goofed on right now?
No.
It's not, we're not meeting 4/18?
We were going to pass a note, but people thought that would look suspicious.
So are we meeting 4/18?
He should have commented Facebook.
Are we meeting, can, can you all, can you all please let him know what that meeting is, so he...
There's no date on it, Mike.
Okay.
On April 18, I will invite Derek Bowman to come present, and then also a side assignment to Ms. Worley, maybe, to perhaps reach out to LSDMC of Rothenburg to see if they could perhaps attend, send somebody to attend that meeting, to A, listen, and B, ideally weigh in on whether or not they have an opinion, I think, would be, would be great. My second assignment is kind of a follow-up assignment, and I believe Board Member Bolton made this assignment in my stead, and if not, it's totally cool, so I'm just going to remake it. It's regarding reading specialists.
It's all right there.
You, okay, you made it. So then, just to follow up on that, if somebody could like follow up on that. So the assignment was, we're very heavy on the 3rd grade, so 20-plus, then only like one or two in kindergarten and 1st grade, and just curious if there would be feasibility, I mean, I trust the expertise, but it seems to me that, again, cost benefit, maybe having more in kindergarten, 1st, 2nd grade would alleviate the need to have so many in 3rd grade. That's all. And then lastly, an assignment to, I guess, administration on how we can support the Aiken Kids book effort. I think that's probably the right place for it, and what that might look like.
Any other assignments? Having no other business before us, I declare the meeting adjourned.